It's like four sap.
Four sap arc, yeah.
We have some to do divided and it's now a large fan of glass.
Okay.
Does this go over construction?
Yeah.
Because they had finished it.
We had a lot of things.
They replaced it with a new one and now it's back to the back.
Is this from?
My guess is they just built a frame. I think so. My guess is they built a frame.
Oh, it's two.
Marty himself.
Where should he be?
Yeah.
It's just a.
It's four or five.
Yeah.
This is just like finding.
No, I guess.
Yeah.
It was just a question.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm getting somewhere.
This is not the business.
I'm on the wrong one.
Did you talk about the shrine?
Yes, ma'am.
Good morning.
Thank you.
Now I'm getting somewhere.
This is not the business.
This is what I'm on the wrong one.
This is all.
Okay, you guys want to get started?
Not really.
Not really?
You're enthusiastic.
Soon we start.
That's right. I've got my mic. What's it doing here? Jesus. You guys are trying to mess it up. That's our good over here. Okay, everyone here? I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Carmel by the Sea Planning Commission to order. Can we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Allen?
Here.
Commissioner Locke?
Here.
Commissioner Karapikoff?
Ah, here.
And Chair LaPage?
Here. Thank you. Before we get going here, I'm gonna put in my new hearing assist. So I can hear the speakers up in the rafters, hopefully.
You got an extra pair?
You know, they work pretty good. For the price, they're pretty amazing. Okay. I want to welcome you all today to our meeting. It's a beautiful day out here in Carmel. We were just down by the beach. The point was just amazing looking. Okay. First item on our agenda today is announcements. I believe staff has some announcements.
I think public appearances, sir, is the first thing.
Oh, public appearances. I'm sorry, I missed that.
Yep, that's okay.
Okay. Public appearances. Under the Brown Act, public comments for matters on the agenda must relate to that agenda item, and public comments for matters not on the agenda must relate to subject matter under the jurisdiction of this legislative body. Hateful, violent, and threatening speech is impermissible public comment as it disrupts the conduct of the public meeting. This is a warning that if a member of the public attending this meeting remotely violates the Brown Act by failing to comply with these regulations of the Brown Act meeting, this speaker will be muted. Having said that, I invite anybody who would like to speak to us at this time about any matters of municipal concern which relate to the jurisdiction of this body, you can please come forward. You have three minutes to speak about anything that relates to that. And this is about items which are not on our agenda today.
I'm Neil Cruz. I assume by now you've all seen the public comment letter that we sent in through Nova, signed by ten members of the Carmel Preservation Association and seventeen residents, twenty-seven in all. We even had people contact us today and say, "Add my name to your letter," so we don't have all the signatures on the letter. I won't talk about the roofs part of this letter, but I think we all know, we're amazed at how things have changed since the L.A. fires in a lot of different ways that are hard to follow. But there are concerns, a lot of concerns. And in this letter, what we talk about is we're increasing the density of this area, and that's going to mean more structures, more ADUs, more buildings, and potentially more to burn down if we get into a fire situation. And so, we are concerned that we're increasing the potential for fire hazard as a result of that densification, which is also impacting our natural environment. We have eighty very special species, plants, birds, animals, that are protected in this one square mile, and the more we build and the more activity we have, the more we damage that. I talked to a previous forester. He said he can visually see the loss of our upper canopy trees. So we are definitely impacting the natural environment with all of this work that we're doing. The other thing is the undergrounding. I'm hearing so much about this that if we were to put the wires underground from PG&E, wouldn't we have less trees falling over and taking out our power? So we might have a much more consistent power supply if we did that. But along with the undergrounding, you would eliminate PG&E coming in and cutting the trees, which apparently they feel they have the right to, I don't know the exact legal status of that, to keep their service working. And in the process, they're cutting some of our very precious trees, and they're doing a lot of damage to them. So on top of that, if we went to undergrounding, now we could take our fiber and run it through the city, and we would have the fastest internet, we would have the fastest internet that you can get. All of this would be accomplished by the undergrounding. And I would like somebody to look at the cost that PG&E has to go through to repair these lines all the time, and the cost for all of these other things that would be eliminated if we did undergrounding, because I know it's expensive. But I think we are beginning to feel that that is something whose time has come. The Coastal Act emphasizes the need to safeguard sensitive endangered species habitats protected by the federal government, which we have tried to uphold within our city limits. Despite strict measures in place, we still face challenges and juggling development standards, climate change, and conservation efforts to protect Carmel's vital coastal resources. We are asking, now is the time to raise our voices in Sacramento through a formal letter followed by a press conference and media outreach to openly discourage any actions that compromise the safety and environmental well-being of our community. We must reject any blanket approach that does not take into account our small, fire-sensitive area, which has limited evacuation routes, an issue that contributed to the tragic loss of lives in recent fires in Mahina. Advocating for these measures is vital to preserving the unique character of Carmel while ensuring the safety of our residents, visitors, and endangered species. Moreover, we truly care about the fire safety. We need to insist that PG&E, a private utility company, take on the responsibility of burying overhead electrical lines instead of resorting to clearing our state and federally protected forests. This should be non-negotiable. Our top priority must always be public safety, but we must also follow our environmental protection laws. We, the residents, would be happy to work with, if you had any members of the commission that would be looking at writing such a letter or something like this, we'd be happy to work with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Neil. Would anyone else from the audience like to come forward and address the planning commission on any matters which are not on our agenda tonight?
With the metal roofs?
No, that's on our agenda. We're gonna have a lot of opportunities to talk about metal roofs tonight. Is anyone online? Anybody got their hand up?
Nobody.
Nobody online? Okay, all right. I'm gonna close the public comments and open it up for announcements, which I believe Director has an announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, you know, I just, and I'm sure that all of the planning commissioners and our staff and everyone in the audience would echo this sentiment, that it's just been, it's been a bit of a shocking, you know, last period of time with the fires down in L.A. We're all really concerned about it. I mean, Neil just talked about it. And so, sort of in response to that, I wasn't able to join you on the tour today, and I apologize for that. But the reason was is that we had a meeting with the Monterey Fire Chief, who's our fire chief as well, because we contract with Monterey Fire, our police chief, our new commander, the city administrator, and myself, talking about pulling together an informational meeting for the community in very short time. For sure, we're gonna be on the February third city council meeting with an agenda item to talk about what the city, you know, thankfully, we as a city in partnership with Pacific Grove in Monterey have been proactive over the last couple of years developing our community wildfire prevention program. That's a document that the city council just adopted in recent time. So that's in play right now with its companion implementation plan. So that's in the works. We're gonna be talking about what we can do to educate everyone on what that implementation plan allows people to do for their properties to make them more safe. Talk about the annual windshield inspections that our fire department does, and they leave notes for everybody at their house. Talking about what more we could be doing, because although we do feel like we're doing a good job and being productive, there's always more we can do. And what lessons can we learn from L.A. fires, recognizing that we are, you know, while we only have a certain part of our village that's considered a high-fire hazard severity zone, I think it's a little bit absurd to think that a fire would not recognize or would recognize where that line is on a map. It just doesn't work that way. So, yeah, February third, we are asking everyone to come and be part of that conversation. Keep an eye out for press releases, but this is top of mind for us at the city. I just wanted to share that with everyone, because I doubt anyone's not been thinking about that this week. We're also partnering with the Carmel Residents Association for a community meeting that's, so the city council meeting will be February third. We're gonna do a, you know, a less formal-style meeting at a CRA-type event. I don't know if it's gonna be at the Women's Club. Those details are still being worked out. But there's things coming in very short order to meet with the community, having our partners, not only at the fire department and the police department, but we're working to pull in the utilities, so like PG&E, CalAms, so we can have these conversations about how ready are we, what can we do, what have we been doing, and what does the future look like for our village. So I just wanted to share that with everyone and let you know that it's top of mind for us, as I'm sure it is for everyone else.
Brandon, does that plan include an evacuation plan?
It's in, that's in the community wildfire prevention program, and so we'll go through those things. That's what we should do. And for anyone that's interested, the CWPP is online. It's on our website. It was adopted by the city council. The evacuation routes, if you're familiar with our city's GIS map, the online map, that's a layer you can turn on if you want to see where those evacuation routes are. But we need, like I said, now that it's so top of mind for everyone, we're trying to look at how we can communicate that better and educate people even more. You know, we've been doing these Carmel prepares meetings on a regular basis over the last couple of years, and those have been great. We haven't had the same, the level of turnout we would hope in all those meetings, and hopefully, we will have one coming up again in not too distant future, and more people will come to those. Yeah, that's a good question.
Okay, any other announcements? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and do not require discussion, but any member of the commission or the public may request that an item be pulled for further discussion. So we have two items on the consent agenda tonight. We have the December eleventh planning commission regular meeting minutes, and then we have the monthly activity report from the building department. Does anyone, any commissioners have any questions regarding those two items? Anyone from the public have any questions? Okay, if that's the case, I'll make a motion that we accept items number one and two on the consent agenda.
I can second that.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Commissioner Karapikoff?
Yes.
And Chair LaPage?
Yes, motion is carried. Okay, that brings us to the public hearings tonight. The first item on the public hearings is a discussion regarding roofing materials and policy direction from the planning commission. Can we have staff report, please?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. I'm gonna let Jake Olander take over here in a second, but just as sort of a preface to this, this is the first of what we're sure will be a series of conversations. What we've, the reason we're here tonight is we've seen a lot of conversations and applications for metal roofs in recent times, and it's become a bit of a hot-button topic. And so, at the request of the commission, we've brought this item. We do intend this to be a multiple-meeting series, so we're not looking for final direction necessarily tonight on a policy. We're looking for, you know, a start of the conversation, give us some feedback. And I'll take the hit on this, I wasn't able to get a member of the fire department here to talk about this tonight. I mean, they're very busy. We did meet with the chief today, but he had to go to another commitment. I am working on coordinating meetings with two large insurance carriers in the area, but they're difficult to nail down right now as well. And so, for our next conversation when we have it, so what our hope is, is we'll get some good direction from the commission and from the community tonight, and we can come back and have another conversation with, you know, filling in those information gaps where we find them tonight. So, thanks for having this discussion with us. This is meant to be, you know, somewhat informal and a bit of a dialogue, so we're excited to hear from the community that have come out tonight as well. With that, I will turn it over to Jake. Take it away.
Thank you, Brandon. As Brandon said, we're just here for discussion, wanted to run through some points. I have some examples, and then just wanted to open the floor up to everyone. So, we've seen an increase in applications for alternate roofing materials for a lot of properties, a lot of metal and composite shingles because of concerns over fire safety and inability to get fire insurance. So the issue with that is that the Carmel design guidelines state that metal, plastic, and glass roofs are inappropriate in all neighborhoods. There is an allowance for deviation from that in the municipal code. There's findings that need to be met, and that's, the planning commission has done that previously, finding that it's consistent with the architecture and consistent with the neighborhood character. Residents have been raising concerns about these metal roofs and high-contrast roofs, the modern farmhouse look, and the metal roofs being kind of a, I've heard this squafication before, and mentioning that it is listed as inappropriate in the design guidelines. The planning commission has previously approved, and staff has then approved afterwards, these composite shingle roofs that are earth tones, and same with metal roofs that are in earth tones as long as they were below a certain SRI. Recently, all metal roofs have been going to the planning commission, though, because we've heard an increase in concern from the residents about the look. Tonight, we'll be discussing alternate roofing. So metal and composite shingles are just the most prevalent, but there's other materials that we wanted to bring up as well, just to be considered, so we're looking at everything holistically. We're looking for guidance for how to approach alternate roofing materials. It's not for any action today besides just direction and discussion and brainstorming the best path forward that meets all the desires of all stakeholders. So, we came up with some examples of staff approval criteria and planning commission referral criteria, so potential ways for, in the future, for us to approve at a staff level, so that we're not sending every single application for a new roof that's not woodshaked, you guys. Here's just a few examples of criteria. Fits the architectural style, fewer than five within 500 feet. That was just a number we came up with. It seemed reasonable, but obviously flexibility there. SRI below 25, as that's something that the commission has expressed interest in previously. Earth tones, and we've seen a lot of standing seam vertical metal roofs, and it hasn't been something that has been received the best. So it could be something that all those get referred to the planning commission still, but any alternates could be approved at a staff level.
Just to piggyback on that, I mean, given, you know, to sort of highlight again the fact that this is a bit of an informal conversation at this point, these are just examples. This is, these are examples of what we're hoping to get from the commission and the community tonight, and so that when we come back to you again, we can start to refine if you want to create certain criteria for a staff-level approval for metal roofs. These are examples of the kind of things we'd be looking for to be able to put a box around that.
Exactly. Something that's, yeah. Here's some examples of metal roofs. It's a corrugated metal roof. All these are not Carmel examples, they're just examples off the internet. So we had something visual, and we can go back to the reference during the discussion if we wanted to. So here's corrugated metal roof. Here's a standing seam roof. And here are some metal shingles, so for reference later if we need to. Another example of potential staff approval criteria for alternate roofing material, green roofs if they fit the architecture, and if they're drought-resistant, dark composite shingles if they're not highly contrasting with the siding, so we're avoiding that modern farmhouse look, PVC roofs on garages and single stories, or PVC roofs on flat roof sections of commercial buildings that we have tucked away that are not visible by the public. And then, here's some examples of green roofs, again, just examples to see how it can blend in in different architecture. Here's some darker composite shingles. These would be colorways that we haven't approved in the past, but with the lack of, the less high contrast could be appropriate, but just, and here are some PVC roofs that you have the flat roof for a single story or for the garage. So, some examples of criteria that could lead to a PC referral would be metal roofs with an SRI above 25, or non-earth-tone metal roofs. Blacker, we could do universally all black or gray composite shingles, as we do now, PVC roofs on second stories of residential, non-drought-resistant green roofs, or plastic, like corrugated plastic roofs. These are all things that we could, we do refer to you guys, and we could keep that going. So here would be the high-contrast gray and black shingles. Here would be corrugated plastic or a second story with PVC roof. And here's some higher SRI standing seam metal roofs that would be referred. So, we're looking for direction, some examples of direction from you. We could have, just for the time being, all alternate materials get referred to you. You give us some criteria for what could be referred and what could be staff approvals, or we could just continue with the status quo, and we'll come back for another discussion, and we could do some combination of these things. But we wanted to open up the floor to get more information. Thank you.
Okay, any questions for staff from the commissioners? No questions? You have a question? Have you included slate in the investigation or not?
Slate doesn't contradict the design guidelines?
Yeah, so it's not, okay.
Yeah, so this, what we're hoping to get is, and we broadened the discussion, and you see from the agenda title, is roofing materials, including but not limited to metal roofs. We're trying to just focus on the category that are alternate, they're considered alternate roofing materials. Metal roofs happen to be one of those, but we figured if we're gonna have a policy discussion about roofing, we should make sure we're not excising other alternative roof materials. So. Just to piggyback on that, I mean, given, you know, to sort of highlight again the fact that this is a bit of an informal conversation at this point, these are just examples, this is, these are examples of what we're hoping to get from the commission and the community tonight, and so that when we come back to you again, we can start to refine if you want to create certain criteria for a staff-level approval for metal roofs. These are examples of the kind of things we'd be looking for to be able to put a box around that.
Exactly. Something that's, yeah. Here's some examples of metal roofs. It's a corrugated metal roof. All these are not Carmel examples, they're just examples off the internet, so we had something visual, and we can go back to the reference during the discussion if we wanted to. So here's corrugated metal roof, here's a standing seam roof, and here are some metal shingles, so for reference later if we would need to. Another example of potential staff approval criteria for alternate roofing material, green roofs if they fit the architecture, and if they're drought-resistant, dark composite shingles if they're not highly contrasting with the siding, so we're avoiding that modern farmhouse look. PVC roofs on garages and single stories, or PVC roofs on section, flat roof sections of commercial buildings that we have tucked away that are not visible by the public. And then here's some examples of green roofs, again, just examples to see how it can blend in in different architecture. Here's some darker composite shingles, these would be colorways that we haven't approved in the past, but with the lack, the less high contrast could be appropriate, but just, and here are some PVC roofs that you have the flat roof for a single story or for the So, some examples of criteria that could lead to a PC referral would be metal roofs with an SRI above 25, or non-earth tone metal roofs, black, we could do universally all black or gray composite shingles as we do now, PVC roofs on second stories of residential, non-drought-resistant green roofs, or plastic, like corrugated plastic roofs. These are all things that we could, we do refer to you guys, and we could keep that going. So here would be the high-contrast gray and black shingles. Here would be corrugated plastic or a second story with PVC roof. And here's some higher SRI standing seam metal roofs that would be referred. So, we're looking for direction, some examples of direction from you, we could have just, for the time being, all alternate materials get referred to you. You give us some criteria for what could be referred and what could be staff approvals, or we could just continue with the status quo, and we'll come back for another discussion, and we could do some combination of these things, but we wanted to open up the floor to get more information. Thank you.
Okay, any questions for staff from the commissioners? No questions? Do you have a question? Have you included slate in the investigation or not?
Slate doesn't contradict the design guidelines.
Yeah, so it's not, okay.
Yeah, so this, what we're hoping to get is, and we broadened the discussion, and you see from the agenda title, is roofing materials, including but not limited to metal roofs. We're trying to just focus on the category that are alternate, they're considered alternate roofing materials. Metal roofs happen to be one of those, but we figured if we're gonna have a policy discussion about roofing, we should make sure we're not excising other alternative roof materials, so we can try to come up with a more succinct policy about alternate roof materials in general.
Are you going to share what has been discussed in the new guidelines, conversations around what their perspective on the roof?
Sure, we can, yeah. This is meant to be a very free-flowing conversation, so if that, we, you know, and we've got at least one member of our Design Traditions Steering Committee, I think I see two actually, here tonight, and so they can speak to that as well, but we have talked about metal roofs, and the current draft of the design guides, which again is not finalized, hasn't been to you guys, hasn't been to the city council, it does allow for metal roofs, but it talks about how to design them in a way that's much more sensitive. I think it even goes so far as to say, you know, not the standing seam that we're seeing right now, it talks about, you can think about like the metal roof that's on the Frank Lloyd Wright House, or, you know, some of the Corten steel metal roofs that we've seen, you know, some of the material, the metal materials like you see in parts of Europe where it's, you know, like nickel or zinc, those maybe aren't as appropriate right on the coast because they'll tarnish and they don't last as long, but yeah, it does talk about metal roofs are still allowed, but you have to be more considerate about the design, not the standing seam that we're seeing. But again, none of those are finalized, that's just the conversations we've been having with the folks that come to those meetings.
Okay, any other questions, staff? All right, I'm gonna open it up to the public for their comments first, so whoever'd like to speak to us first, come on up. This is pretty casual, we're just looking for comments about roofing in general, there's gonna be no decision made tonight, we just wanna get, collect some input and direction.
Hello. Thank you for putting this topic on the agenda tonight. My name is Daniela De Sola, and I'm a local architect. I'm here because I support much-needed changes to City of Carmel-by-the-Sea design guidelines. Homeowners should have more choices on the types of roof materials they can use regardless of roof replacement or new construction. The problem that we seem to have is that design guidelines are in direct conflict with the WUI, that's the Wildland Urban Interface Codes and Standards. So people that own homes in areas that are in high-fire zones have to contend with design guidelines that are not aligned with fire safety. I do agree that aesthetics play a vital role in creating a sense of place and identity for our community, however, when we consider the long-term welfare of our citizens, it's essential that we ensure safety is never compromised in favor of visual appeal. By prioritizing safety now, we can avoid potential hazards that might not only cause harm to our community members, but also could lead to significant financial costs and legal liabilities. I believe that if you allow for more Class A fire-rated roof material choices, including metal roofs, we can create a solution that addresses both safety concerns and aesthetic values, ensuring that the city's future is both beautiful and secure. And while the visual appearance of our community is a key part of its identity, no design or development should put people's lives or safety at risk. And lastly, from a perspective of resilience and sustainability, modern planning must focus on resilience, including preparing for natural disasters, environmental hazards, and ensuring the city can handle growth without compromising safety. A beautiful community that is not safe is ultimately unsustainable. Sort of in reference to the comments that I just heard Brandon say, I would love if someone could explain to me why everyone is so against standing seam metal roofs, specifically the standing seam part, I don't, I don't understand that sort of X that's been put, so that would be useful to sort of understand where that's coming from. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker would like to come up, please?
Hi, I'm Joe Dinucci, resident since 2020, owner since 1983. When I moved to Saratoga in 1980, the only recommended roof in that city was cedar shakes because they're beautiful. Twenty years later, the one material you could not use on a roof in Saratoga was cedar shakes because they're dangerous. And I bring this up only to point out that I think we have to recognize times change. Cedar roofs are beautiful. My 1903 cottage on Dolores was built with cedar on the side, cedar on the top, cedar all over. It now has a composite roof, which the Planning Commission thankfully approved four months ago, and now it's much more fire-resistant. I strongly agree with the previous speaker, but I think we have to begin to recognize not only safety, but also the property rights of the people that own these properties, and ask ourselves if some of these recommendations are strictly arbitrary and subjective. And I understand there is a place for subjectivity in the choices that we make, but my personal opinion has gotten quite, a little too far in the restrictions, and I recommend that we think more broadly.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Chairman LaPage and members of the commission. I'm Don Goodhue. I'm an architect, former member of the Planning Commission. I'm here tonight to talk about standing seam metal roofs, which I will state, I think is a perfect situation, application for Carmel. I have a letter to you, you may have seen, about the Jensen's Roof coming up later in the evening, but I'm addressing my comments now more generally on the whole issue. If you're interested in the history of standing seam roofs, as I was, I looked them up, they go back to Roman times, the Pantheon has a copper standing seam roof, and they were, became common in the 19th century in the United States in a lot of the fine villas and estates, very distinctive, very high-quality. Certainly, I'm not proposing a blanket approval of any standing seam roof. You want to look very carefully, case by case, at the spacing of the seams, the detailing of them, the material, the color, and the texture, those are all terribly important. I think, given the current fire concerns, it makes it all the more valuable to have something like a metal roof, standing seam roof, to address those concerns. So I think we have here a very traditional roofing system that is a perfect response to our current fire concerns. A good standing seam roof has a fine scale and texture, qualities are very important to Carmel. So, as the previous lady mentioned, everybody seems to be down on standing seam roofs. I think to rule them out would be, to take a step backwards rather than one that meets today's needs. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Don. Next speaker, please.
Chairman, I have an opportunity to speak up individually.
I can't, I can't take comments from the audience. If you want to make a comment, please come up to the microphone when it's your turn, and then you can ask questions or whatever you like. Come on.
Good evening, my name's Rob Nicely, I'm with Carmel Building and Design, I've been contracting in Carmel for 30 years now, and I just want to talk about, just for a couple minutes, about what the choices for roofs are now. So obviously, we all know that the times are changing with regard to flammable materials on the roof, so whereas we know and love wood shingles, that, you know, many of my clients are moving away from wood shingles because of the insurance problems. I also agree that, you know, when you're doing a metal roof, a standing seam is sort of what you do when you want a high-quality roof, if you're using sheet stock, the other two kinds of sheet stock metal roofs are warehouse-type roofing, which has a little pattern to it, and then the corrugated roofing you saw, but those are typically not considered to be as high sort of aesthetic value or as high quality as standing seam roofs, and then there's the shingle kind of roofs. Of the other materials that are available that are less flammable, there's composite shake and composite slates, but those are both plastic roofs, so they're composite material, but they're largely plastic with a little bit of wood flour or sawdust in them, so those are on the naughty list as plastic roofs. And then there's the ubiquitous asphalt composition roofs, which is really what everything is in, or we've seen a lot of those roofs, a proliferation of those kind of roofs over the last few years. They're more associated with, they're the kind of thing you would normally expect to see more in a tract house, or not, you know, as sort of consistent with the underlying idea of the aesthetic in Carmel, and they are, you know, petroleum-based, so also not a good choice. So then, so you're down to some kind of metal roof, or a tile of some sort of clay tile, a cementous faux shake, or some sort of a cementous. So really, the choices are dwindling, and I too question whether or not on a purely, of course, you know, you're getting the feedback you're getting from residents, but it, you know, purely aesthetically, if you can be objective about that, I think that they're a fine solution. We've built many houses that are in a style that would be consistent with that, so just wanted to mention that there aren't too many choices right now.
Have you had, as a contractor, have you had any experience with the metal shingle roofs?
I have not, I mean, I'm aware that they're perfectly viable.
Haven't done any research on them, or?
Not yet, no.
Okay, thank you, I just want to take advantage of your expertise. Okay, the next speaker, please.
My name is Matt Hanner, also with Carmel Building and Design, I've worked with Rob for about 30 years now. Wanted to share two things with you. The first is a photograph by David Hume Kinnerly, Pulitzer Prize-winning photographer, and this is from the Palisades Fire, and he has to say, "I went up in a helicopter this morning and flew along the PCH in Pacific Palisades, what an unmitigated disaster. I know several people who have lost their homes and feel really bad for them. This metal-roofed home was the only one on the block to survive. I've never seen such devastation, and I've seen plenty during my career." And then goes on with his thank yous. You know, that drove home to me the concerns about fire-resistant roofing and how at-risk this community is with the number of wood shingle roofs we have. And, you know, to piggyback on to the comments about alternative roofing, one item, or one concern that I've not heard brought up a lot, that I deal with regularly as a builder, is the weight of roofing materials. You know, slate is great, tile is great, but when you go to do a re-roof, you have to get the engineering signed off that you can put those roofs on it, and it's really not applicable for a re-roof on a lot of houses in Carmel, especially when you get into open beam ceilings that are four-foot-on-center, four-by-six with decking over it, that just will not support those roofing materials, and that's where we do need to find alternative roofing materials that are viable for the city. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, the next speaker, the gentleman had a question, you want to come up and?
I think he has an item on the agenda.
Yeah, I know you do, I thought maybe you had some other comments that were not related to your application.
I think it'll all be related.
All right, okay. Next speaker, please come up.
And Brandon, we didn't get that letter that Neil referred to, so I don't know what that was, but if we could get that forwarded to us, that'd be great.
Yeah, I don't know. Neil, did you, the letter you referenced earlier, was it emailed to the city?
We asked to distribute it to the Planning Commission and the city councils.
When was it sent in, do you know?
I think it was day before yesterday.
Okay, we'll follow up and get it to you if it didn't make it.
I can check the email.
No, it's okay, thank you.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
I didn't know this topic was here, and I'm actually here on another topic, but my name is Justin Hastings, and I am a local builder in our area, and also spent 20-plus years in the fire service. I worked here in Carmel City for Carmel Regional Fire Ambulance, worked for Carmel Valley Fire, and finished my career working for the City of Seaside Fire Department. I retired in 2019, and related to the fire concerns, I can kind of, I don't have any skin in the game whether metal roofs are not, but the way the fire service works for us, my brother-in-law's house was saved in the Palisades because he has a standing seam roof. The gentleman mentioned the importance of it for the resistance of WUI compliance. When we get to an incident like that, which I've been all over the state, one of the things we do is we look at houses we know we can save. Probably the reason that house was saved is the engine company pulled up, saw a stucco house relatively new with a metal standing seam roof, and every time the firefighters are gonna pick that house, they're not gonna pick the fully-shingled wood shake house, they just pretty much put themselves in a position to write them off. And we do have some other pretty cool products coming out, like Braava shingles, which look just like wood shake, but for the fire department, a lot of them might just drive by thinking it's a wood shake roof, and not recognize that it actually is a fire-resistant product. So the three things that are gonna really provide some protection are the roof, the siding, so hardy siding, stucco, and tempered glass. And when you talk about slate and the weight, firefighters also take into consideration that weight when they're gonna go in and start fighting that fire inside, because the weight of those products are something that's at risk of them to collapse on top of us when we're in there doing fire attack and things like that. So those are things from a fire perspective that might be related to this topic. Thank you.
That's interesting, thank you for your comments. Okay, the next speaker, please. No other speakers that want to get some comments, Neil?
Yes, Neil Cruz. Is it okay to pass these out, Brandon?
Absolutely.
Just did some calls, did some research, and there's some pictures of roofs in here, but you've already had some good samples from staff, and there's plenty of them. The CPA is not at all in favor of standing seam metal roofs. Are we so afraid? Are we so afraid of fire that we're willing to lose the character of Carmel? I don't think so. Now, what I, just real quick, talking to an insurance, Matt at Carmel Insurance, he said your shake, shingle, fire-treated, he said that's just about out. He said I might be able to find an insurer that would cover your roof, but he said probably in a year they're gonna drop it, so that door's kind of closed. I would like to mention the metal category, you know, we say we don't want metal roofs, I think what we're talking about is standing seam, because it does not look at all like a traditional home. But if you look into stamped tiles, metal tiles that are stamped, I talked to one supplier and he said, "The warranty on a stamped shingle, stamped metal shingle, that we will give you, is a lifetime warranty, and on top of that, in certain cases, the warranty is transferable to the new owner of the house." And he said, "You're not gonna get a lifetime warranty on standing seam metal roofs." So there is certainly an option there. Let me just go through these, the list that I put together. Clay tile, slate, you can see a picture, I just got this in the mail today. There's slate, there's synthetic slate, there's Spanish tile, there's asphalt roofing, different kinds of metal roofing, concrete tiles, green roofs, fiberglass, matte shingles. I don't know if rubber shingles are gonna clear us on fire or not, I didn't have time to check that, but there's recycled rubber shingles, and there's rubble shingles, and there are solar shingles in the flat or low-slope roof category. Hot tar and gravel, just, the roofers just don't want to do it, there's a lot of liability because of the heat and the tar and stuff like this, so it's really falling away. But I talked to a 40-year roofer in Salinas, and he said, "Neil, I actually like torch-down roofing better than I like PVC." He said, "After our last Fourth of July," he said, "I had a lot of work going around patching PVC roofs." And I said, "Well, what does that say about fire damage?" And he said, "Well, the material is not flammable, but it melts." And he said, "If I was up on these roofs, patching them, and I was not patching any torch-down roofs, only PVC roofs, they do, something happens to the material, it melts." So I question whether PVC should be the only option on the flat roof section. Also, there was a comment in the Also, there was a comment in the discussion about the PVC roofs, that maybe we should allow them, if there are no houses in the area that will be able to see them, to look down on them. There may not be now, but what if the neighbor next door does a two-story house? He's going to be looking down on a plastic roof. And as you can see from the photographs that I've included here, it looks like the house is wearing a condom. It just doesn't look natural at all. It's got a shiny plastic surface, and it looks very, you know, it just doesn't look good. So we really want to avoid the standing seam roofs, because that is not compatible with almost every traditional house design that you do. And I've just given you a lot of options for, of roofs that will meet the requirements of the fire code and so on and so forth. And I think I'll just leave it at that at this time. Thank you.
Neil, before you take off, the torch down roofs, what's that material?
It's three sheets of a felted, you know, material. The top sheet is a granulated, embedded surface. And you can get them in eight different colors. There's, the colors are in that sheet I gave you. That's near the end.
So it has some, the adhesive is an asphalt or a-
It's like an asphalt.
It's like a butyl-
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly the material.
But it's heat activated?
Yes. But as he said, he had no damage from fireworks on any of the torch down roofs. It was only the PVC roofs.
Thank you. Anyone else want to come forward? Eric's coming up.
Mr. Chair, while Eric's making his way up, can I fill some time? I want to correct myself and apologize to Commissioner Allen. I misremembered what was in our draft design guidelines. I went and grabbed them from my office. You see, they're all marked up all over the place. What it says right now about metal roofs as a draft language is, "Use metal roofs only if they are detailed simply, have narrow, flat panels devoid of corrugations or striations, use genuine field-installed standing or flat seams, and are unreflective in either uncoated like Corten steel or of integrated earth tone color." What I was remembering was the devoid of corrugations and striations, but it does, at this point, the draft language says, "Field-installed, genuine standing or flat seams are okay." That's the draft language, though, again, not adopted.
Right. Okay, Eric.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Eric Dyer, architect, local architect. I guess I'll just start by maybe stating the obvious. I think all of us need to be open, agile, creative, and flexible to address, you know, these fire, the fire resistance of materials and still retain the character of Carmel. And I think all of us need to try, do our own research, define alternate materials, and how to use them creatively and detail them well. I think with all of it, I, as an architect, I like to kind of go from a prime directive that is kind of one of the basis of the design guidelines, which is using things authentically and having materials that are authentically expressed. And so I'll just kind of jump into what I've been reading here. For example, the metal shingles, which I think are an interesting idea. The ones I've seen are basically stamped and made to imitate slate or wood shake, and there's metal. So metal, I don't think is the best material. Perhaps there are imitation materials that are virtually, you can't tell the difference, but I think metal you can, and it just will look artificial, especially when you see the patterns on the roof. I think with composite asphalt shingles, you know, we have the petroleum, as a petroleum product, it's a problem. But they are probably the least expensive material. I sometimes worry about people in Carmel that need to re-roof, possibly because of insurance, possibly because of deterioration. And they're, they just don't have the money for a very expensive roof to solve their problem. So I think it needs to be an option. So I think developing some basic policies about what type of asphalt shingles should be used. I think it's important to keep them very simple and monochromatic. There's a lot out there that you'll start to get checkerboard patterns across roofs, which really look inauthentic as well, in my opinion. But there's a lot that they're basically monochromatic and simple and flat, that they just kind of disappear, and they're just a simple pattern on a roof with one color. In terms of others, thinking about materials authentically expressed, I think ideally, you know, metal roofs and the material of the metals should be something that could be naturally patinaing, whether that's, you know, we can't use copper anymore, but certainly zinc, or there's other alloys out there that can give that. Aluminum sometimes can give that. You have to be careful, of course, of the reflectivity. You know, galvanizing can do that as well. But again, you have to be, eventually it will dull down. And that's, I think, what you're looking at, because then you won't see a repeated pattern across a roof that you can tell is artificial. I'd like to go briefly into green roofs, which I think should be allowed and encouraged. And I'll start with, I really do agree with the principle that's stated in some of these alternatives from staff, that whatever the roof is, it needs to fit the architectural style and be authentic to that style. So that would go from whether it's metal roofs or living roofs. And there are ways to do living roofs that are more fire resistant than others, and so that should be encouraged as well. And then I think in terms of flat roofs and PVC roofs, yeah, there's more, certainly more than PVC, TPO, and torch down roofs are, can be done. I think the principle involved with that, first of all, I think they're all, you know, done on flat roofs predominantly. And if you're going to, you know, the activity is important for energy compliance, energy efficiency. But in terms of the aesthetic of it, which is also important in Carmel, I think the principle should be, if you can see it, then it needs to have a gravel ballast. And that could be an earth toned or gray color. And that will, that will help with fire resistance as well as it will look a lot better. You know, if it's on a roof which you can't see, then a simple membrane roof, torch down roof would be fine. And then it could, it could be much more light in color. I think, you know, some, you know, I'm still out there researching things like concrete tile and how to use that in an interesting way. Again, that's a heavier roof for newer homes when you're designing them. Oh, and then finally, the earth tone comments, I just want to make sure we understand what that means, Jake. So I, earth tones I sometimes think are browns and things like that. But, you know, obviously, metal roofs normally and historically were things like zinc and lead, which have a, you know, a kind of a dull gray color, whether light or dark. And that's, that's an appropriate color for them, as long as that's included in that, is what is an earth tone. Okay, I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric, for your comments. The next speaker, please.
Hi, everyone. It's always good to see you. I'm going to speak somewhat in my capacity as chair of the Steering Committee for the Design Guidelines. I'll try to differentiate when I'm not doing that. Personally, I certainly understand the anxiety about the metal roofs. I think, in my view as an architect, I believe it's coming from the industrial quality that sometimes is present with these roofs. There are a lot of off-the-shelf, clipped-together systems. They're very crisp. They certainly aren't handmade looking in any way. They don't have any irregularity. And to top it off, in order to be warranted, especially if they have a steel underlayment, but certainly an aluminum as well, they are often topped with a plasticized automotive paint coating, which has no chance of ever looking crafted. It will always be either there or not there, if it chips off. Obviously, they can do it matte, so that's not the issue. So I get it. I get why it's a fearsome problem. I do want to let you know that the, now speaking as the chair, that the planning, I mean, the Steering Committee has been working on this. We've been working on, I think Eric and Don have sort of previewed some of the concepts. We've been working on this, as we have been working on all concepts, to sort of simplify the city's approach to it, so that these are not agonizing decisions and have an underlying really important and sound philosophy. And in this case, as Eric Dyer just mentioned, it would be authenticity and naturalness. So we are thinking, in fact, I would say, again, personally, that if we get that stuff right, the color won't even really come into it. It will flow naturally from the good materials and good installation techniques that are required. To that end, the Steering Committee is in the process of putting together a preferred materials list. That is not just limited to roofs. It will be for all materials. However, the roofs are being addressed just in, addressed just in the way I mentioned. One of the things that I think is a little bit of a false dichotomy that I'm just hearing in the room, is of course, we can put safety and fire resistance at the very top of the list and also aesthetics at the same time. We are lucky to live in an age of choice, and there are products that will satisfy both, that will also satisfy the philosophy of Carmel to be natural and authentic and to, and consistent with the forest environment. Some of those have already been mentioned, slate, tile, other ceramics other than the barrel tile that we're used to thinking of when we think of tile. And also, don't forget Flanders Mansion, which has a concrete roof. There are many, many products. This is a mineral product, basically. So it's, yes, it's man-mixed, but it's really a natural product since the Roman time, if not before. And there are now products that are very simple. They're, I'm assuming, we haven't fully finished the research, but they might be lighter weight than some of the other things. But they might be able to be substitutes for a stone roof, for example, or a heavy barrel tile roof. And so I just, I would love it to, and there's Class A wood, which I do think may, I mean, great. It should be possible, but maybe insurers are getting skittish so that. But I certainly echo what's already been said in the room. There is no need to imitate other materials when you can just go to another material and get your authentic crafted roof that way. And then I'll just leave with one thought, is that I really, given just the nature of this discussion, how important it is to do it quickly, especially with what's going on down south and your own interest in it, I would love it if we could just, we've always wanted to have some kind of feedback loop with the Planning Commission and the Steering Committee's work. And it just occurred to me maybe yesterday, maybe we could send a liaison, just one person from this committee. I know there's already some interest that's been expressed in side conversations I've had from some of your members that volunteering to do that, to just attend our meetings. And that way, we'll just be able to catch you up faster, and it won't be such a lag time. And we can sort of cross-pollinate on these sorts of things, too. So.
Victoria, are you suggesting someone from the Steering Committee come here, or Planning Commission goes there?
The opposite.
Okay, thank you.
If that makes sense.
Victoria, I had a question. I just want to kind of drill down-
Sure.
-on the roofs. You made a comment that, if I got this right, but there's no need to pick a material that's imitating something else, because there's materials which are authentic in their own-
Exactly.
-nature and meet the-
Yes.
-stated requirements of Carmel. So-
Yes.
-in the context of standing seam metal roofs-
Yes.
-and other metal roof types, I mean, they have stamped shingles. I mean, Neil just presented us with stamped metal that looks like shingles, it looks like tiles-
Right.
-other types. I mean, what is your opinion about that in the context of that, where-
Right.
-you have a material which is trying to replicate another look?
Right. And I'm a little, I will say, Neil, you and I can have words outside. I'm a little surprised that he brought that forward, because he's been such a great and valuable contributor, and I think knows that the Steering Committee in general has rejected any, because it's too complex. You guys, this, even the decision-making require, like, this is a material that's kind of okay, but now it looks like something else. And what we're trying to do is simplify it to the point where if you're using metal, you install it as though it were metal. You let it be metal. If you want something that looks like a slate tile, then you install slate. If you not, if you don't need to have the slate look, but you want a cementitious material, then you find a cementitious material like clay or another porcelain, I don't know if they have that yet, but concrete, things like that. And you let those materials be themselves, too. So we would not, as a Steering Committee, we are not planning on recommending to you and then to the council, that we try to mix it up and have, use steel or metal to look like wood, use wood to look like concrete, use concrete to look like slate. We're not, we are simplifying that as our recommendation, anyway.
Right. And many of these materials can be manipulated easily to look like things which they are not. They can be representational.
And it's not necessary, is what we're saying.
And it seems like a lot of times, it's not quite that successful.
It's not successful, because in the end, and think about it this way, every natural product that you install is naturally, each component is utterly unique, if it has a pattern at all, right? So a piece of metal is going to be unique. As soon as you stamp it with, let's say, wood pattern, then you will see every fifth or 10th or 20th panel the same pattern. And then you look at that in its aggregate, and you see the pattern emerge. You can see that from a long distance, you can see it close up. For example, I know this isn't the topic necessarily tonight, but we're talking about cementitious siding, which is a great fireproofing tool, to have, you know, you have it horizontal, you have it vertical. But we're saying, yeah, that it works, as long as you make sure it is not stamped with a faux wood grain. Because as soon as you walk up to that building and you see, oh, it's, this is, this is wood grain pattern A, and there's wood grain pattern A, and A, and A, and A, and you see them all repeating itself, that would never occur in nature. And so we're trying to get back to the roots of Carmel and the, and the sort of natural and authentic and crafted. And with standing seam metal roofs, as Don so erudite-ly put it, this is an ancient tradition. It maybe have gone off the rails a little bit in Carmel, because we're using industrial products, because we haven't been specific about how to make them look crafted, how to make them look correctly proportioned, all the things that Don mentioned. If we get that straight, I think then we can have that as part of the mix. But there will still be all these other alternatives as well in the preferred building list and others that people might bring forward.
Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Explanation. Okay, anyone else would like to address the Planning Commission regarding this?
I'm Matt Hanner, again with Carmel Building and Design. I previously was a biologist in my former career. And one of the things I wanted to just address that I've heard is a consideration of the materials and the effect that it will have on the environmental standpoint of those materials. We're no longer allowed to use copper for gutters and for downsouts in Carmel because of stormwater runoff and the state licensing and everything else. And I do have concerns about zinc and galvanized materials as well having an impact on that. And then as far as any of the petroleum products as well. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else would like to address the Planning Commission about this topic? Okay, are there any, any hands up online?
We have five hands up online.
Five people?
Yes.
Okay. I can't see them. My screen's not.
I've got it. We'll begin with Cindy Lloyd.
You can just, why don't you just, you can give me a name, I'll-
Cindy Lloyd.
Cindy Lloyd.
Cindy Lloyd, Cindy, would you like to make your comments?
I would. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
The reason I ask is, it's very hard for me at home to hear you, but I know that Brandon is working on correcting that. So it's not a complaint, but I just wanted to verify that you could hear me. So Madam Chair, I mean, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission and city staff, my name is Cindy Lloyd. I have three comments, maybe four. First of all, what excellent testimony has been received about this building material. Personally, I bought a house in 1991 in a probate sale, and it had its original redwood shake roof. I then had to re-roof it at one point, and because of the requirements of the time, I could put wood on, but it had to be treated, and I did cedar. And then life went on, and that no longer was acceptable, so I couldn't put wood at all. And I did go with composite, the thickest that I could find in a very good roofing company. So I now have a roof that's supposed to last for 50 years barring any accidents. I've read some interesting articles about the fires in Los Angeles, and one that stood out to me was a house that had been recently built, and it did have a metal roof. But what it said, what the builder said, he did, and he believes the reason that the house did not burn down was that he had no eaves on his roof. Therefore, the embers could not lodge themselves in the eaves. And I have one little story that I'll share with you. But I have a friend who lives in Lake County in Middletown, California, and they had a huge fire up there a few years back. He is a building contractor, and he was part of the design team, and he did all the contracting work to put in brand-new cabins at Harbin Hot Springs. And the fire went through there, and it just decimated the place. And all his cabins that were built to specifications for fire resistance fell onto the ground. The only thing that didn't burn were their metal roofs. So just a metal roof doesn't say- burn were their metal roofs. So just a metal roof doesn't say that your house isn't going to burn down, but it does say that you do have some protection. And I have no, I have no influence on you or anybody else as to what kind of roofs should be used in Carmel. I would love to see wood shake roofs, they are gone. So, anyway, thank you very much, and good luck with your, the rest of your comments.
Thank you for your comments, Cindy. The next speaker?
Next we have Jill Petkert.
Jill, you want to speak to us?
Hi. Oh, is it my turn?
It's your turn, we can hear you, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, thanks. I just want to echo some previous comments about the importance of fire safety. I live in the wildland urban interface, so I am absolutely concerned about that. I guess, one thing I want to comment on is affordability. You know, if we can match up aesthetics, keep both aesthetics and fire safety as high priorities, that's great, but if, but the solutions need to be affordable. Otherwise, I think we're going to lose full-time residents. If, you know, if people can't afford to put on a fire-safe roof, and if they can't afford fire insurance, they're going to move. And the people who are going to move in are wealthy second homeowners. And I know that's a big concern of a lot of people in town, and so I just want that, you know, in terms of metal tile roofs, if those are unaffordable, then I don't think it's a practical solution. And I would be opposed, one of the bullet points was having limits on metal roofs within a certain radius. That seems unfair to me. If my neighbors put on a metal roof before I do, and now I can't have one, and I can't get fire insurance, that doesn't seem fair. So I would be opposed to that. But that's it, just an emphasis on fire safety and affordability. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker?
Pete Scudder.
Keith, you want to?
Pete.
Pete, Pete, you want to?
Good afternoon, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, Pete, we can hear us.
It's our time hearing you. Thank you for having this meeting this evening. Couple comments, there has been some good comments brought up tonight, and obviously, fire is in everybody's interest right now, more now than probably ever before. What's happened down in Southern California is a tragedy, as we know, and, yeah, and anytime you have an option to fireproof your house better than it is now, there are those options. In metal, it brings that option, obviously. It's a Class A rated roof system, and it has some benefits with that. Also, that really has been mentioned tonight is the, you know, we have an eclectic mix of homes in Carmel, different siding, different stucco patterns, stone, there's so many different, so many different types of homes, and, you know, why not have an option if we, sounds like we're getting to a select type of metal standing seam, which I would agree with, and keeping it, you know, in those natural tones, earth tone colors, I think that would be something to give people options. It's also, metal roof is, stays, it stays pristine for many, for many years, as you know, when you put a composition shingle or synthetic slate or something like that, it's a beautiful roof, don't get me wrong, because all roofs are beautiful. But after a while, they, you know, they'll get some mildew on there, some staining and things like that, and they don't look as nice, you know, the day they're put on. And metal has a real tendency to be very easy maintenance, and it can be cleaned up very quickly. So, I just lost my video with you. So, yeah, I think, you know, the direction of giving choices is good. It's great for roofing contractors to be able to have those choices, and great for our customers, because we've had several customers that just couldn't put metal roofs on their house, and their house style really warranted a metal roof would really look good. So I think the choice people have based off their style of their home, having that option may be a good direction for the council to go.
Are you through, Pete?
Can you hear?
You've answered your comments?
Complete.
All right, thank you. Okay, the next speaker?
Next we have Gretchen Fleischer.
Did you say Richard?
Gretchen Fleischer.
Gretchen.
Gretchen, okay. Gretchen, please.
Hi, this is Gretchen, and I just want to support several of the comments that have been made so far about the use of metal standing seam in particular. It's a historical material. I don't, I don't understand why that is being ruled out as being acceptable. It's been used throughout the centuries in the world, in general. And I think that if, if the guidelines are really, if the intent is to use traditional materials, I think that's, that's one that we should definitely keep in the mix. I also want to repeat the comments about authenticity. I definitely believe that if you're going to put something on the roof, that it should be authentic, it should be what it's meant to be. And that leads to my point about stamped metal roofs, they're trying to be something else. They're made to look like something else, and there's a lot of composite materials on the market that have tried to do the same thing, they never really succeed. And a lot of the composites have not held up over time, and the manufacturers generally go under, and the warranties aren't worth anything. So I think to limit the use to a stamped metal roof would not be appropriate. I feel that's limiting people, and I don't, I don't feel the need for that, I don't see any point. And I also want to reiterate that I don't think that there should be limits to how many metal roofs are in an area. I think, again, that's putting undue restrictions on people, and I think they need, if someone can put a metal roof on their house, if it fits their house style, I don't think that it should be dependent on the houses next door to it or in the general vicinity as to whether or not they'd be able to do that. So those are pretty much my comments, and I appreciate having the opportunity to have this discussion. I think this is a really needed discussion for the community in general. Thank you.
Thank you, Gretchen. Maria, would you like to make your comments, next? Go ahead, Maria, we can hear you.
Okay, hi, this is Maria Bruce. I am delighted to say that my husband and I enjoy living in Carmel for the last eight years. We remodel our house, and we have a standing seam metal roof and a stucco house. And believe it, our house is unique in many ways. I found it beautiful, I found it unique, I found that it sort of blends very well with Carmel, and I call it an inviting house. So it is, in some ways, really nice that you're considering a different alternative, and that you're also allowing people to basically enjoy their own styles. The other piece that I find interesting is that we also just renewed our insurance and had no problem doing so for the fire issues. However, many of our neighbors have complained about difficulty in getting insurance cover and/or their insurance costs keep going up. So I really strongly recommend you reconsider or think very, very, very well, denying or not accepting applications from members of the community, and especially, I have neighbors who are requesting standing seam metal roofs. And I think there's no such thing as too many or too little. I think it's kind of allows people to make their own choices. I think we all have our own houses, we own them. So therefore, I appreciate you taking the time and listening to all this, but due to the recent fires and the situations that have developed even stronger now, I would say, please give significant thought about how you can even think of restricting metal roofs, even though I truly enjoy having a metal roofed house with a stucco, and have never worried about fires. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. The next hand up says BDI. You want to unmute yourself?
Hello?
Now we can hear you, go ahead.
Hello?
Can you hear us?
Go ahead, BDI, if you can hear us, go ahead.
Yes, I'm sorry. Hello, my name is Bahari Ronmanesh. I'm a resident of Carmel. Thank you for having this meeting over this very important topic. I'd like to echo a lot of some of the sentiments and opinions, professional opinions, from the people that have stepped up to speak in favor of metal roofs. And I think it's really important that the commission listen to the architects' professional opinions on when an architectural style is compatible with standing seam metal roofs. It seems that, you know, in the case of, for example, a ranch-style home, the council has said maybe a metal roof is not appropriate for that style, yet, you know, from an architectural perspective, it is perfectly fine. So I think it's important to pay attention to experts, that is, because that is their expertise. So in addition to that, I think that while aesthetic preferences are subjective and important to consider in community planning, they really should not outweigh the imperative of safety and resilience. Council members who oppose metal roofs and community members, based on visual appeal, fail to grasp the gravity of our current challenges. The backlash of these LA fires is yet to be, I mean, it's going to take a while, but we, the constituents, the people that bear the price of the premiums, the insurance premiums, they're going to be, it's going to be on us. So to echo what another speaker said about affordability, I think it's really important to consider, to consider that, especially with the, I'm certain, the spike in premiums for all of us California residents. And also, I think it's time to move beyond the outdated perspectives and embrace solutions that address the challenges of today and tomorrow. Encouraging the use of metal roofs is not just about adapting to climate change, it's about protecting lives, reducing long-term costs, and demonstrating responsible leadership. Council members have a duty to prioritize the well-being of their community over subjective preferences, and endorsing metal roofs is a clear and necessary step in that right direction. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, I don't see any more hands up online. Is there anyone else in the chamber here that wants to make any comments? No hands going up, oop, hammer went up. Rob Carver, you want to speak? Want to unmute yourself?
Yes, good afternoon, commissioners. I joined the meeting late, so I don't know if anybody mentioned the Tesla solar panel roofs. Has that been discussed?
There has not been.
Sorry, I couldn't hear the response.
It hasn't been discussed or brought up.
It has.
It has not.
Oh, it hasn't, okay. So we've, we've used these, they're black glass, and we use it on a historic house in the Highlands, and it's really quite beautiful. It's not shiny particularly, it's, of course, would depend on the angle, but it's small tiles, and each one is a solar panel, they're all connected together, and I think it should be something that, you should do a little research on maybe, and see whether you think it's compatible. They're certainly a lot better looking than, than a solar panel, you know, on top of another roof. It takes, it takes the place of the roofing and the solar panel at the same time. It's not trying to look like something else, it's just a black, basically, you end up with a black roof. And the darker colors are the ones that sort of blend in the best with, I think, the urban forest environment that we have. So I think it should be, something that should be considered. And I agree with the discussion on the, basically on everything that's been said since I joined regarding the appropriateness, potentially appropriate use of metal roofs. I think that they do have a place.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anybody else online? I don't see any hands going up. I asked everybody here in the chamber, I think everybody had their chance. Okay, I'm going to close the public comments, open it up to the commissioners. Commissioner Allen, would you like to begin?
Sure, I can start. So, you know, this is a really unique community, and I love some of the words that were used around, you know, based on being creative and authentic, and that naturalness that we all appreciate. And the thing is that we're at a pivotal, pivotal point right now. I mean, we could ultimately change the whole entire aesthetic of this community if every single person comes in with a metal roof. I mean, like, I did some research over the weekend and looked at Paris, and looked at the beautiful zinc roofs that they have in Paris, which, they're absolutely amazing, right? They're lovely, and the craftsmanship, and what goes into that is, you know, is unbelievable. At the same time, you know, I mean, we can't have every single roof metal here, because it will change our community, and I mean, the look of our community. And so we have Class A fire-rated materials that are approved within our guidelines, that can be used. They're, you know, they satisfy the safety requirement, the aesthetics requirement, and the affordability. And so I want to make sure that the information that we're all seeking and looking at is realistic and not cited toward whatever your view is, because there, we have plenty of options. And I think, so I took it upon myself to call both the fire station and also the insurance agents, because I wanted to know, like, how do they look at these types of things? So the insurance agents that I spoke to said that it didn't matter to them, as long as it was in that Class A. And so there's a lot of variables that go into the assessment of risk associated with insuring your home. And it's not just a metal roof, that's not just the answer. And so there's tons of variables that they take into consideration when they're assessing the risk that they have in insuring your home. And so, so I think we're just getting a little bit, like, you know, because of what's happening in LA right now, which is tragic and super sad, I don't want us to base decisions on what's going on down there as like some sort of jerk reaction that we have to now apply metal roofs on everything. Again, I also want to talk about LA a little bit. There's a lot of variables that go into the reasons why there is one house standing, and it's not because it has a metal roof, I can guarantee. There's tons of different aspects about that. It's proximity, it's, you know, whether or not the homeowner stayed and hosed it down. I mean, there were so many different things happening in these fires, both Eaton and Palisades, that we cannot take from that the conclusion that everybody needs to run out and get a metal roof. And so I called the fire station, and I talked to a very helpful firefighter. And that firefighter told me that he doesn't have a preference even. When they pull up to a fire, they assess the situation and they fight it accordingly. And it doesn't matter if it's a metal roof or a, you know, a slate roof or whatever, they have the equipment for everything. And so I asked, is there a difference of walking on it, like, are you guys afraid to get up on top of it, are you afraid to go in? He said, it's the exact same in every situation. They pull up, they assess it, and they use the proper tactics. And, you know, here we have the luxury of being very close to the station. Within a matter of one to two, three minutes, they're there. And so, I mean, that's a privilege that we have in this community. If we were to face something that LA faced, which was that of, like, you know, overwhelming a fire department. a fire department with, you know, the, the thought that you had fires starting everywhere, it's not going to matter what materials are out there. I mean, literally, you've, you've seen the pictures, it's horrific, I mean, everything's just decimated. And so, so I agree with what was proposed by the design committee. I think that it was well-written, it sounds like something that we could adapt, but, you know, I just want to get back to, I just expect more when designs and applicants come in front of us, because we have the opportunity to maintain this, you know, this unique community that is high-quality, high-craftsmanship, and, and what we see is these, like, mass-produced, manufactured options, and, and it's just, I would, I would just like to, like, raise the bar if we could. But, but so, I feel like we have a pretty good basis in the wording that was proposed, and I would probably go with that type of recommendation.
Mr. Locke?
Yeah, thank you for that great introduction. Yeah, I agree with you. And she took a lot of comments that I was going to say, but I will let her have those. I am, actually, I want to say I appreciate all the comments from the public today. I've learned a lot, and really appreciate that you guys took the time to share your experiences. I really wish that the revised design guidelines were moving forward faster, and I guess, you know, Brandon, I don't know if there's a possibility, but clearly, if we are putting in some kind of interim policy or that kind of thing, is it possible to just look at that one piece of, of the guidelines as something that we could say we buy into?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, the planning commission has, you know, policy, and that's part of the reason for the conversation, is we're, we've realized that, you know, as Commissioner Allen pointed out, this is, this comes up basically every meeting we've had for the last however many months. So, we recognize the need to get here now and have a policy conversation, and the planning commission has the authority, and we've sort of, like, teased out a policy based on your decisions, but that's why we're having a pointed conversation about it tonight. You know, you tell us what the policy is coming forward, and that's, that's sort of our practice. We can't do something, you can't make a policy that's, you know, antithetical, or like, against the municipal code, but you can, you can, you have the, this body has the authority to interpret our code, and if you can, you can come up with a policy that interprets the code, and I would, I would argue that, you know, what I read from the draft design guidelines comports with our existing municipal code, and the deviation when it better meets the design standards, you know, the thing that we have been doing for the last few months. You can tell us that's the, that's the test, and that's your, that's your policy.
Okay. So, yeah, and, and given the, the direction at the December 11th meeting was to have a discussion about this, you know, we asked for three things, really, we wanted to see exactly what the California insurance requirements are, and I think, I haven't really heard that at this point. Yes, I'm aware of different types of Class A roofing materials, but it seems like everybody is very stuck on the, the standing seam metal roof as being the number-one option, and it is probably the number-one affordable option. Or, is it expensive? Okay.
Yeah, it's expensive, yeah.
But slate and some of those other, yeah, no, I'm looking at the bigger. And so, so my concern is that that does seem to be what everybody seems to be requesting, and I don't want to see row after row of houses in Carmel that have standing seam metal roofs. And I think we're starting to get to that, that point where even today, one of the ones that we're going to look at today's got another two of them right within, you know, literally, I could throw a stone and hit them. And that's concerning to me, and as Aaron said, it definitely will affect the character of our community, and, and I'm concerned about that. We had also asked about a fire department rep to provide information, and thank you for the person here who, who is, actually has that history, but that would have been something to hear. We also asked for samples of alternative products, so we could actually touch, feel, look at what those products are that need the Class A fire rating. So, I guess on that note, I think that there were good comments as far as different standards for us, the style, I think, is something that I heard a lot of, but who decides what styles standing seam metal roofs are appropriate on? And I mean, I heard, you know, I've heard Chair LePage talk about what, you know, what would be appropriate, the architects have had their comments about it, and I'm not sure everybody agrees. That would be number-one thing I'd like to see, is somebody giving us some hard information about what styles would it be appropriate on, versus what would it not be appropriate on, because I think that gives us a lot more guidance to make a decision, as well as staff making a decision. Color, you know, we had the discussion about dark, super-dark roofs and whatnot, okay, so what colors? How dark is okay? How dark is an earth-tone color? Versus, you know, is, is the charcoal black? What is, where do we draw a line on that? Reflectivity, I actually took photograph today in Carmel of a standing seam metal roof that I believe is probably one of the older ones, and it was glaring very brightly. And unfortunately, my phone didn't quite get that brightness, but, but it was very bright. And then, I think the questions about some of the other materials that we talked about, that was really good, and Neil, thank you for your handout that you gave us today. But I think, other than that, I'm just, I think I would be more in keeping with trying to adopt something that's coming forward, and then getting some more clear direction on what exactly we can, but what, what is appropriate and what isn't appropriate.
Thank you, Commissioner Locke. Commissioner Karpick, your comments, please.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I agree with both previous speakers, I just want to bring a little bit different perspective. California has always been fire-prone and earthquake-prone. It's just people probably forgot about it, a lot of people don't think about it, and it's, the worst thing to do is, when you have a disaster like that, is to overreact and go change the policy and change the face of town, and then figure out that you went overboard. Same, imagine next week we have an earthquake in the area, and a bunch of houses collapse because they have heavy roofs, maybe, and the structure is not designed to support them, then we go in the other direction and start redesigning the houses in a different way, because we now want to fight earthquakes. So, policy decision, I have to be very careful, and I don't think that anything really dramatic happened, you know? It was an expectation that there will be a big fire, and the big fire came, there will be a big earthquake pretty soon, and we'll go for that. So, policy changes, we need to be very careful with. I agree with Commissioner Locke that the worst thing we can do is introduce a policy and end up with Carmel being all metal roofs and modern houses and flat roofs, and that would destroy the city. I think our goal as a planning commission is to keep the village character. I think that's overriding kind of message of our design guide, and it's the right thing to do. I think the only thing that changed is that it used to be cheaper to stick to the design guide, because we didn't have cost of insurance, cost of material, cost of construction, all these issues, and now, now we do. So, it's getting much more expensive. We don't know exactly how much more expensive, the insurance companies haven't set the prices yet, but there will be a premium for living in a village in a forest. So, if you want to live in a village in a forest, it's going to be very, very expensive. So, that's, that's the only, the only thing I see changed after the fires in, in L.A. So, how do we find this balance between, you know, being fireproof, earthquake-proof, anything-proof, and keeping the village forest is really the big question? We can look at a variety of things, it's not just the roofs. The metal roof itself is not going to save you, it has to have some gypsum underlayment as well that makes it heavy as well, so it cannot be just a metal sheet, the metal sheet itself is not going to save you from fires, there needs to be some insulation layer below that, and that makes the whole thing heavy. And when you, when you change a roof on the existing house, you notice how the weight change, and the house starts settling. I did that a couple of years ago, replaced my wooden shake roof with composite shingles. And even though composite shingles are not the heaviest option, you hear the house basically creak for like a week or two, it kind of settles to, to kind of accommodate the weight of the new roof. So, if you go with something heavier, it may not just settle, but it may really break because of the, and my initial idea was actually to put a clay tile roof, that's what I wanted, but then the structural engineer told me that there's no way that the existing 2x4 construction can actually hold it. I have to go and change pretty much everything to support this new, new roof, so it wasn't feasible. Yeah, and so that's, that's really the, my contribution to this discussion is to think about it, or start thinking about this balance between keeping the character of the village and meeting these new requirements. And I don't think it's, it's going to end up with roof, roofing only, because the fire can find a way under the roof. A lot of the roofs are ventilated, so there are openings to ventilate this roof, the fire can go through that into the roof. Siding, again, is, how do you make the siding fireproof? It's very heavy, all of this, what do they call them, the cement, cementedos kind of siding, it's very heavy, the same thing that you have, the same problem with the weight that you have with the roof, you have with the siding, the walls of this existing houses are not designed to, to carry that, so you, you end up replacing walls, putting strong walls, putting additional beams, you change the entire structure of the house just to support this additional fireproof materials, because they're heavy. So, that's, that's really where, where the problem is. In terms of, specifically about metal roofs, I, I think we can find locations where they work. Today, one of the locations we visited, or maybe even two, I can see, see them, you know, being used, but, you know, some locations, they're just not, they just don't fit, they just don't fit. And contrasting colors is not the colors of the forest, when you have a black roof on a white house, definitely not a good idea. We need to figure out if there are more natural colors that we can put with a metal roof. And then my concern with metal roof is not just the cost of installation, cost of installation is high, but we have a lot of trees and branches falling on roofs, and if it's a, if it's a shingle, you just go and replace five shingles. If it's a composite roof, you just replace one piece of it, and it's very easy to replace, it takes like a 10 minutes. But if it's a metal roof, I'm not sure exactly what the procedure is of replacing, because they're, they're kind of interconnected, they're fasteners, they're, it's a very complex thing, when it gets damaged by a fallen tree or, or branch, how difficult it is to replace it, and I think you cannot really walk on it, so how do you clean it, how do you maintain it? I, I'm not sure, I have no experience with metal roofs. So, we have to look at all of these, these elements. Yeah, I think that is, that is my, my kind of contribution to this discussion, I hope it was useful.
Thank you. Okay, my focus on this comes back to the land use documents, and Carmel Municipal Code requires that we do design review and that we stay within certain findings. And so, we are required, you know, in 17.58.010, it talks about the, this, this section is the design review, the 17.58, and any changes that we make have to be in the context of that, there has to be, you know, has to be findings made that are supported by that. The dilemma I see that we have is that, in our residential design guidelines, we have a, a policy statement that, you know, wood roofs and shingled roofs are the architectural, predominant architectural character of the, the community, but we're up against a dilemma that we can no longer use that material, for, for all the reasons that we've, we've heard tonight, and I don't need to restate those. So, we are at a point where we've got to change a material, a roof material, we have to eliminate a roof material which has been a defining characteristic for our community, and we've got to replace it with something else. Now, what we have is, we have a list of what we call natural materials, and those are tile and slate, and, and, and then we're also talking about metal, of course, and then there's these composite materials. And a lot of those, as was pointed out by the chairman of the ad hoc community, are materials which are being formed in such a way to replicate things, and so you, you come up against the, the idea of authenticity. And I see that as the dilemma. So, as a planning commissioner, my goal is, I would like, I would, I would love to just have standardized materials that staff could just approve, so homeowners could just come in, apply for a re-roof permit, they could pick what, a, a, a list of materials that met their needs in terms of aesthetics, cost, and insurance requirements in, that meet, you know, which address primarily the fire issues right now. So, that's, that would be, you know, a goal that I would like to see. It's, it's going to take some work to get there, but, but it's being worked on right now, and I'm, I'm happy to see that, and I want that to go forward. And if, if the ad hoc committee needs a member of the planning commission to come and meet with them, I'd be more than willing to do that, I'd love to do that. So, that, that's the goal, but I think we really have to acknowledge that we're up against a situation that's going to change the architectural character of our residential communities, not so much the, the commercial district, that's, that's a lot more flexible, and it also has a different aesthetic to it, but we really are up against that, and that's going to, that's going to take some thought and some exploration about these, these, these materials. I really heard the comment about limiting the use of, of a particular style of roof in a neighborhood, and how that, there's, there's an, there's an inequality, a built-in, you know, built-in inequality to that. As one of the commoners said, you know, if you're the first one, you get it, and then everybody else is out. I mean, there's just something that, that is wrong about that. So, but we, it does say right in here that, you know, it says, number three, encourage construction of residents that are diverse, innovative in design, yet compatible with the city's forest setting, as well as site design materials used in surrounding structures. So, you know, it's a complicated issue, but, but we're really up against, we're changing the character of the community, and we're, we have to do it. We're, we're in a moment in time, you know, I mean, the L.A. fires are an event that just is beginning to happen. Climate change is upon us, we just went right through the 1.5 centigrade, you know, world average climate that, you know, gay, or was, it was a goal that was set by the, I believe it's the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change. That's the United Nations organization which brings all the climate scientists together and develops these policy statements. So, we've gone right through it, you know, and, and that was their, that was what the, I think it was the Kyoto Accord in 2015 set as the goal, and we've gone past that. So, we're getting into an area in our climate which we really are going to experience some of the worst effects of climate change, and from the policies that we have and what's happening, we're just, we're, you know, we're, we're not going to make these goals of limiting, you know, the, the rising climate, you know, the heat. So, we've, we've got to make a change, and, you know, everybody knows that, we, we see what's, what's happening. So, like I said, for, for a planning commissioner, I, if I'm going to make policy, if I'm going to make decisions, they've got to be based on findings in our, our land use documents, because that's the only authority that we have up here. We're just your neighbors, but we're just trying to use, you know, the, you know, make a determination and interpretation and an application of the land use documents so that we can, you know, meet- you know, meet the goals and the requirements that are in our municipal code. And that's really all I have to say about it right now. I think we, we've got, we've, we've started the work. We had a great discussion tonight. There's committees which are working on this. I know the city staff's working on it. And I, and I'm, you know, I hope that we come up with some standardized materials so that homeowners can come in and just select those off a list and they don't have to go through this, this extended review process. And I really want to try to get a lot of the subjectivity out of it. I'm really uncomfortable with having to deny one homeowner a type of metal roof and then tonight we've got three more, one that we, we denied last meeting. And I just see there's an inherent unfairness to this and it makes me very uncomfortable. So that's really all I have to say about it. I don't have any, any specific solution to these problems. I think we've all got to work together on it and, and, you know, come up with some things which we can work towards those goals. I think we know the goals, but I, I heard everybody had pretty common goals here tonight. So we've got to work towards that.
So I guess Mr. Chair and other commissioners, I, what, what's your sort of pleasure for moving forward on this? You know, we're, we're looking to you as the, the policy setting group. Do you want us to agendize this topic for next month and, and try to bring back more of the items that Commissioner Locke talked about? And then we can all work together to help kind of refine a policy? Because one thing that could come out of these conversations is, you know, interim policy. And we can take that as far as we want. You know, the, the planning commission can come up with a policy and you can suggest that we take that through to city council and do it as an urgency ordinance. So it becomes more of a law. We can do it as it just remains at a policy at the, the planning commission level. So you, you have some consistency in among yourself when you come and we have these applications that come through. Part of that policy could be, you know, until the design guidelines are done, all alternate roof materials have to come to the planning commission. These are just the ideas. But would you like to continue this discussion at your next month meeting, bringing back some more information? And then see if we can work closer towards having a policy? What's your pleasure, Commissioner?
Well, this is the first discussion that we've had with the public. So we're, we're not ready to break up with a policy. And we certainly don't have a standardized list of materials.
Absolutely.
So I think the discussion's going to go on, but the goal should be to work towards those things. That's what we, what you heard. So what, what, there was a lot of, you had a lot of good, you know, comment tonight and direction. You know, so I think the broader context is look at the goals, you know, and then we'll work down to the specifics. So let's get the goals in mind and then we'll work towards the specifics.
Okay. So would you like, and I guess that's what I'm asking, is you want us to come back at the next meeting and continue this conversation?
Let's develop some goals, you know, and, and they need to be specific to each material. I mean, I think, I think the comments about authenticity of material really for me clarified that we don't want to get into stamped metal roofs, you know, that are trying to mimic other materials. So that's for me because the, the last comment we had, when we had another meeting about a standing seam roof we turned down on a ranch house, I was bringing up materials, alternative materials like that, but that's not really what the community wants and it's not really authentic. And so for me, this is, this is a learning process too. So that, but that was a specific thing which related directly to metal roofs. And when I went back and looked at the draft, you know, design traditions, they have, they talked about metal roofs and they, they specifically said that standing seam roofs with low profile seams should be promoted. And they gave an example. They showed some photographs. So there's work that's already been done. And it seems to me at this point, what I see is that on metal roofs, the standard seam is an authentic application. It has a long history. I saw a building today that was, well, you know, I think you talked about the Parthenon. It goes back to Roman times. This is, this is, this is how they were able to use the material mechanically. And that's what created the authenticity of it. So, you know, rather than having all these mimic stamped, you know, materials, you're trying to make metal look like shingles or shakes or, you can do that. But it isn't consistent with our goals here in our, in our, in our municipal code. And then the other materials, when we're talking about composite materials, if we're going to have a composite material as a standard, it needs to be very authentic and meet those other requirements in terms of, of fire and safety. And safety is a preeminent, you know, concern. I mean, it isn't going to do us any good to try to preserve the character of the community if we have a fire that burns it all down. I mean, we saw that horrific photograph of Pacific Palisades. I mean, fire destroys everything. I mean, it just, you know, we've all seen what happened to Lahaina. I mean, I spent many, many times in Lahaina and I've been watching drone videos how that's been progressing. And, and the place that I knew is just gone. And Pacific Palisades is gone. I didn't know that community, but you can just look at that photograph bought tonight. So we have to, we have to, safety has to be first and we have to protect this community. And, and we are at a point, we've got, we, like I said, the historic character of wood roofs, which was part of this community is, that time has passed. We, we just, in the context of climate change and what we're dealing with, with the financial sector, we just have to move to, we have to, you know, do something else. Do any of the commissioners want to give any more specific direction?
I believe that we need to move relatively rapidly since we have so many applicants waiting for an answer. So I think this does have to be on next month's agenda.
Great, thank you. And I think, I think we have, you know, the, the last part that the chair talked about, you know, coming back with goals. I sort of added that with a box next to it on top of the things that Commissioner Locke mentioned for moving the conversation forward. We can come with a set of what we perceived from hearing all the great comments tonight from the community. I agree, Mr. Chair, those were fabulous. What the, what the goals of setting a roof policy would be as well.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Really appreciate all your comments. All right, let's move on with the public hearings. The next item on the public hearing is number four. This is DS 24326, a Smith application. This is consideration of track one design study referral for the replacement of a wood shake roof with a new metal roof. Have a staff report, please.
So my presentation will be quite brief on design study 24326 Smith, coming on the heels of our discussion and also discussions over the past year or two years. So I have just a few slides. Go ahead, Jake. This, this application involves a, a single family residence with existing wood shakes. You'll see the wood shakes featured on the picture on the left and then the red line there indicates the pitched roof portion where the applicant is proposing to replace the wood shakes with a vertical standing seam metal roof. The lower slope portion of the roof on the right is, I believe, tar and gravel and it is not proposed to be a metal roof. So the applicant is proposing a, a product by Custom Built Metals in color black. Staff did go out and survey the area and there are two other existing metal roofs within 300 feet of the, the subject property. As I said, they're proposing a black color. Here's just an example of the product. The SRI is 23, which is below the, the 25 that you've, you like to see products be below. The product is a one inch seam height and then it can come in either 13 or 17 inch width panel, aluminum panels. So options on how to proceed this evening. You do have a resolution in front of you which is simply based on ample prior decisions by the planning commission not to approve black standing seam metal roofs, particularly on a white house because of that high contrast color scheme. So as, as worded, a condition of approval does say, number one says to approve a metal roof. You can edit that condition to just say a roof. And there is a special condition in there that says applicant can work with staff to choose an alternate roofing material, either comp shingles or material recommended by the commission. Or if the commission determines that the proposed black standing seam metal roof is appropriate, we can just strike that special condition at number 19 and approve the product. Next slide. But again, based on what we've been hearing from the commission over the past year, staff does recommend approving the track one design study, but with that special condition requiring the applicant to find an alternate material. I'm happy to answer any questions. We also do have the homeowner with us. And of course, I should have said, the reason for the application is concern about fire. Thank you. And you saw this in the field, but I have it here as well.
Okay, questions for staff? No questions? Okay. Would the applicant like to come forward or the applicant's representative and make their presentation? Oh, just before we get started, I usually give five minutes to applicants to make their initial presentation, public three minutes, and then I give time for the applicant to answer any questions that come up during the course of discussion, you know, before we close the public hearing. So, go ahead.
Thank you. I do have some comments that I took during the other comments that were amazing. I appreciate everybody talking on this vital topic. Lifetime transferable warranties for standing seam metal roofs are absolutely obtainable. Metal roofs in Lake County didn't burn because they were non-combustible. There's a difference between non-combustible and fire resistant, which I will talk about tonight. Stamped shingles are combustible. They're fire resistant, but they're petroleum based. PVC is a combustible material. We can change the aesthetics of our community by burning it down as well. The assessment of the situation that a firefighter spoke of to the commissioner base, is based on building construction and materials, defensible space and exposures and time of burn. The fires we have had over the past 10 years are far worse and more destructive than they have ever been in the history of California. We cannot stand by and not affect policy simply because California has always had a fire problem. It is new and different now. Metal panels are easily replaced if damaged. You can absolutely walk on them. Chairman LePage and members of this commission, my name is Nathan Smith and I am the owner of Sabbatical at the northeast corner of Taurus and First Avenue. Thank you for visiting my home and allowing me to speak with you today. I am a professional firefighter at the rank of captain with more than 15 years of experience. And in fact, most of my crew is currently down on the Palisades fire. I was able to stay behind so I could present to you this critically important fire safe construction project. I am also certain that the members here, I'm sorry, I understand that the commission is opposed to non-combustible roofing materials for the fear that they are inappropriate for any Carmel neighborhood despite past practices and approvals. I am also certain that the members here are aware of the California Fire Code requiring two feet of non-combustible material on all sides of any structure. We do not have this assurance in Carmel. In fact, I have four city trees that are within two feet of my combustible roof currently. My proposal for a metal roof is simply an effort to protect my home and my neighbor's homes and my community from the unthinkable. Non-combustible materials are the only way to offer such protection. I have devoted my life to protecting others and their homes from fire. I am now asking this commission to allow me to protect my own. And finally, I would like to share my letter with you on the advances, on the advantages of non-combustible versus fire resistant roofing materials. If you have further questions for me, I would be happy to try and answer them. Thank you again for your time and consideration. My letter that I sent to Ms. Wallace, as a professional firefighter with more than 15 years of experience in fire suppression and prevention, I write to you regarding the critical role that roofing materials play in mitigating fire risk, particularly in areas prone to wildfires. While Class A combustible shingles, composite shingles, meet minimum fire resistance standards, metal roofs provide demonstratively superior protection, making them the safer, more resilient choice for fire prone regions. Advantages to metal roofs in fire protection. One, non-combustibility. Metal roofs are entirely non-combustible, meaning they will not ignite even under extreme heat or when exposed to flying embers. In contrast, while Class A composite shingles resist ignition, they still contain petroleum based materials that can degrade over time under intense heat and prolonged ember exposure. Number two, resistance to embers and flame spread. Wildfires often spread through wind driven embers landing on roofs. Metal roofing panels from a continuous seamless barrier that prevents embers from penetrating or igniting roofing material. Composite shingles, despite their Class A rating, can have gaps or vulnerabilities that embers can exploit, especially at any, as they age. Longevity and consistency in fire resistance. Metal roofs maintain their fire resistant properties for decades, while composite shingles may lose effectiveness over time due to weathering, warping, or degradation. Metal roofs are also less likely to suffer damage from other hazards like hail and falling tree limbs, which could compromise fire resistance. Reduction of secondary risks. During structure fires, metal roofs do not contribute to flame spread or produce toxic smoke, unlike composite shingles, which can release harmful fumes when burning. This not only protects the structures, but also ensures greater safety for firefighters and nearby residents. Durability against wind and heat. Metal roofs are highly resistive to high winds, which are often associated with wildfires. Their heat reflective properties also reduce the chances of adjacent vegetation ignition from radiant heat. As we face increasing wildfire threats due to climate change and urban expansion into wildland areas, it is imperative that we are open to considering alternative and superior building materials. This will continue to support your purpose of favoring the general interest over the special interest in order to give durability to the Carmel experience and our special quality of living. Thank you for your attention to this critical matter and I would be happy to provide any additional insights or collaborate on strategies to improve fire safety in our region. Thank you.
Okay, I just had a question for you. Are you, are you selecting this particular color for a reason? I mean, what, what?
No, I don't care about the color. I like the color. If that's what the commission's hung up on, tell me what color you want me to put on the house. There's a red metal standing seam roof across the street from my house. I don't know if you saw it today. It's red with a white house and green trim. Seems like they're contrasting, but I don't care. Tell me what color you want and I'll put it on there.
All right. I just wanted to see what your thoughts were on that. Thank you.
Yep.
I have a question.
Yep.
So your proposal is to just do the standing seam on the pitched area and not this, this lower sloped area? Why?
Because the lower sloped area doesn't need a new roof. I, I know that Ms. Wallace said that. I'll answer the question. I know Ms. Wallace mentioned that I'm only replacing this roof because of fire safety. I'm replacing this roof because it's 35 years old. I'm going to leak very soon.
No, I saw the condition of it today.
It's horrible. Now, if that's a condition that you won't approve this unless I replace the lower pitch part, I'll, I'll replace that too. But at least it's better because it's not wood shake. It's, it's tar. So it's a Class A fire resistant, you know, tar sheet for a flat roof. I don't, I don't love it, but it's, it's an effective roof.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
No, it's just time. And like I said, if there's, if you need to come back to answer some comments from the audience, I'll, I'll allow you time.
Okay.
All right. Okay. Members of the public, would you like to make some, any comments at this time? Please come forward regarding this application.
Be again. Neil Cruz. Is this house the style of house that would automatically call for a standing seam metal roof? This is one of the questions we were talking about sooner. I think I can say that we strongly support the staff's recommendation that they look for an alternative material that is not standing seam metal roof. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the planning commission regarding this application? Okay, anybody online? Got some hands up?
Yeah, we have Maria Iregofo Ruiz.
Maria, you said?
Yes.
Okay, Maria, you want to unmute yourself and make your comments?
Okay, well, my name is Maria Ruiz. We spoke earlier. And as a metal roof owner and as a neighbor of the Smiths, relatively, I'm one of those houses. I'm one of those houses nearby. I 100% support their ability to put a metal roof. I think it goes well with their design style of their house and how it looks. And I think, especially after Nate, particularly as a firefighter, and with all the knowledge that he has in the background of the subject, I find it a little bit difficult to believe that we can deny him his application. I was basically approved by this same, uh, planning, uh, organization, uh, 10 years, I mean, eight years ago, to have a metal roof, and we truly enjoy having it. So I, I suggest we go ahead, and his house does not have any particular style that is to be slightly changed for one way or another to look differently. They have updated their house, and it looks, will look really good with a metal roof, so I'm fully supportive of it. I just wanted to share that with you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, I don't see any other hands going up online. Give it a second here. Okay, none going up. Last call for comments from the public. Do the applicant feel like, I didn't, I didn't think there was anything that came up you need to answer. So I, I, if you need, if you feel like you need to make a comment.
No, you.
All right, okay.
Anyone else have questions? I'm happy to.
All right, okay, thank you. Uh, 'cause I'm gonna close the public comments, open up the commissioners for their comments. Commissioner Kere-Petkoff, would you like to shove off on this?
Uh, yeah, just, just two comments. One is the, um, replacement of the roof. I would, I would recommend replacing the entire roof so that the building stays in, kind of in sync, and it has overall design. And in terms of color, definitely not black, not contrasty. Uh, I'm not sure, the, the house is already painted in white, as far as I remember, and the windows were painted in some dark gray or black.
It's a white house with black trim.
Yeah. So, yeah, this is something we discourage within the community, so if the color is not a problem, I would recommend different colors.
Thank you. Commissioner Locke?
Yeah. Um, I guess I am kind of of the mind that I would support staff's recommendation and find an alternative until we actually get through the process of determining what we really want to be able to approve and what we don't. I don't want to have more of these products out there until we've come up with our final decision on it.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Locke. Commissioner Allen, your comments?
So, on this, on this style, this typically wouldn't be one that we would want to be metal, but, um, I, uh, I'm struggling in terms of if it were, then definitely I would want some sort of neutral color on it. It's, when you're front-facing on this home and, and, uh, you will see the entire roof, it does, uh, I mean, generally, the, I realize you have a red one right down the street, which I don't know what that was, but, um, uh, generally, we were, in the past, we've approved roofs that, where it wasn't completely visible by the street, like it was to the side or something like that. I don't know how we, I don't know how we move forward with these types of situations when everyone is under the impression that this is the only way to save your home from a fire. So I'm struggling right now.
Okay, your comments? All right. My feelings on this are that, in the context of what I heard tonight from the, uh, the ad hoc committee for the design tradition guidelines and their feelings on metal roofs, also, we've got, we've got draft language in the guidelines supporting metal standing seam roofs. I, I will support, I support the metal seam, uh, standing seam roof that the applicant is proposing, but with two conditions. It can't be a black roof, it's gotta be some other color, you can work with staff on that, and you need to take off those shakes on that, that, I think it's, assuming it's that where the pitch changes?
Yes.
Is that what we're talking about?
No, they're, you're talking about the...
The flat part?
You're looking at the image and the flat part.
I'm gonna come up to, I'm gonna come up here and answer.
Sure.
Come on up here and answer, 'cause we need to get on the record.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm a little confused about what...
I think you're talking about the front of the house, there is a awning that goes over the front step, and that is due to be replaced.
So if we're standing, we're standing on the, on the north side of the house today, the, the pitch has, it changes in the back. It goes front, it looks like, it's like a eight and 12, and it goes to a...
Correct, there's no shingles on the back.
So are there, are there shingles on that lower pitch? That's kind of...
Negative. It's, it's tar and gravel sheeting.
All right, well, that, I, I, what I'm, what I'm suggesting is, I want, I want that replaced, 'cause that, you can put metal on that, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I wanna get that off there.
Didn't think the commission would approve.
If you have convinced me that fire is, is, is a prime motivator, so...
That'd be great.
You need, you need to work in a direction, and I think also that creates consistency with, with the architecture of the house and everything, so. So those, those would be the two conditions that I would add to, to a resolution, and I'm gonna make a motion that we accept the application as presented, uh, the application as presented by the applicant for a metal standing seam roof, but the special conditions, it, it cannot be black, they're gonna have to work with staff, come up with another color, which is more in line with our guidelines, and also that they have to take off the, uh, the tar and gravel on that, that lower pitch roof, and it has to be all consistent.
Okay.
So that's my motion.
I can second it.
So we have motions made and seconded. Uh, other motions have been made, it's gonna be, any more discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
No.
Commissioner Kere-Petkoff?
Uh, yes.
And Chair Lapage?
Yes, motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, that brings us to item number five on the public hearing. This is a design study, DS 24273. This is a consideration of a track one, uh, design study referral for the replacement of a wood shake roof on a two-story, single-family residence in detached garage with a vertical standing seam roof. This is the Beretta project. May I have staff report, please?
Similar to the last presentation, we have existing wood shake roof. It's deteriorated, in fact, there's plants growing underneath the wood. The applicant is proposing a vertical standing seam Sheffield dark bronze metal roof. I drove around the neighborhood with Catherine, actually surveyed the neighborhood for both of these, looking for metal roofs, and there's one within 300 feet, so it's, there is, by approving this, there would be diversity of roofing styles. Here is the dark bronze, it's an SRI of 24. It would be two-inch seams and 16-inch wide aluminum panels. This is an example that I pulled off the Sheffield website for what the dark bronze looks like when it's applied. Similarly, we have special condition 23, which would require the applicant to work with staff to choose an alternate roofing material, such as comp shingles or a material that's suggested by the commission. If the commission thinks that the roof would be appropriate, then we can strike that and allow the applicant to proceed as proposed. And that is, staff recommends that the commission adopts the resolution as written with the condition requiring them to choose an alternate material. Thank you.
Questions for staff in the commission? Thank you. Okay, would the applicant like to come forward and make their presentation?
Hi, my name's Javier. I wasn't aware of, that I can come up here, but, uh, thank you. I'm just getting a second with the last gentleman that came up here, said about, you know, having a metal roof. You know, the, I know we're all very concerned about the fires, and, you know, that's one of the concern here, but also the roof just deteriorating. It's a lot of trees that is kind of hovering over the, the home, as you saw. So the bridges accumulate there, and it starts to grow weeds. With a metal roof, it's easier to clean, easier to maintain, and, uh, you know, it does have a lifetime warranty. Uh, you know, it's good to walk on it under, you know, normal weather conditions. Um, yeah, I think we, you know, with the style of this home, um, the architect with, Mr. Beretta, that was the first suggestion that came across, and that's his professional opinion that would best suit this home.
Uh, I had a question for you. These are aluminum panels?
So they do come in galvanized and aluminum.
Are you proposing aluminum, or you're...
I'm proposing aluminum. It's, this, it looks identically as the, the galvanized. It does have a baked-on paint system. The reason that we're proposing aluminum is just for the corrosion-resistant piece of it.
So it's more corrosion-resistant than the, the painted steel?
Correct. Under, for this specific project.
'Cause in our climate, you know, salt has a...
Exactly.
You get electrolysis with aluminum. I don't know if you've ever seen old aluminum windows, but they, they tend to powder and dissolve.
So because of the protection of the paint, and the way it's baked onto it, you're not gonna have that, and it's...
Do they, do they bake the seams? I mean, does the paint wrap around the seam? Everything?
So we actually manufacture these onsite. You know, we bring out our machine with a coil, and we run it out to whatever dimension we need it to be.
So you extrude them?
Exactly.
Okay. Interesting. All right. Any other questions for the applicant?
Um, does it have to be standing seam?
Uh, based on the, uh, the roof slope, it was, it's, it, you get a better watertightness on it.
So there's no other alternatives to metal that you guys do?
We do, um, a different variety of them. Unfortunately, you know, I know we talked a little bit about, you know, metal shingles and whatnot. Unfortunately, a lot of these companies, they come and go because of their watertightness systems that they have. It, they just fail and fail, they change names, other companies get them, and we don't want to be a part of that. We don't want to take that risk or put a customer through that experience.
Is there, um, does this, the height of the seam, do you control that? Or is that, or is there a standard? I mean, what's, what's the, what's the minimum standard for a seam height?
For a slope like this, it's two inches, um, just for watertightness. We can do a, a double lock on it.
And then what, you can lower the height?
You can lower the height by half an inch.
Uh-huh. So the minimum height would be an inch and a half?
Inch and a half. We can do an inch and a half on this.
And do the, do the widths of the panels vary at all, or anything?
It's 16 or 18. We find that a half, you know, looks cleaner when it's a 16-inch.
What was the, um, there was a term that I read, I think, I was reading the, 'cause you're, you're with Scudder.
Correct.
And there was something about water pooling, is that correct, or something in your contract? Can you explain?
Water pooling...
It, it said something about the, an effect that was inherent to the material. Basically, they were notifying the customer, you know, that, that there's, there's, I, I thought it was water pooling, did...
Oil canning? Oil canning?
Oil, that, I'm sorry, thank you. What was it called?
Oil canning?
Oil can, yes, I'm sorry, I was way off, but, but what, can you explain that?
So that's just the, uh, you know, the nature of metal with, you know, different climate changes, sometimes you kind of see that waviness in the panel.
Okay, so it was some rippling that, that, because of expansion?
Yeah, some sort of rippling.
Because of expansion and contraction, and it's a flat material?
Correct.
It's not, it's not, it's not put down with adhesive?
Exactly.
It's, basically, it's floating except for where...
It's floating, it expands and...
The mechanical fasteners are?
Yes.
Okay.
It expands and contracts, you know, and to, going back to that, why we want to keep it to 16 inches is to avoid that as well, you know, minimize.
'Cause, I mean, in this situation, then you just have, like, stripes everywhere. So you got stripes on the roof, and then you got stripes on the walls, and so I don't, I don't even understand why an, an architect would want that look, but...
I've been reviewing, you know, plans, I've been with Scudder for 20 years, and I've been reviewing, you know, a lot of plans that are coming through, and probably a good 40 to 50% of the new projects that are coming across my desk are, are deciding with a metal roof here in Carmel, and, you know, even outside of Carmel. Especially with this type of home, the board and battening system, that is the two go, what I've been seeing from many architects.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you.
Uh, I do have the property owner, Mr. Beretta, waiting to speak as well.
I'm sorry, I can't, I can't...
Property owner wants to speak.
Oh, the property owner wants to speak, okay, they, they're online?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
Good evening, and thanks for the opportunity to speak. Uh, just by background, um, I worked 35 years with Becker Corporation, they're engineers and instructors, so I put a lot of thought into this, this roof. I also worked for CalFire as a college student, so I know what the firefighting situation is and have a sensitivity for that. And the third point I'd make is, uh, we've loved Carmel from the first time we saw it in the early 60s. We were married at the mission in 88, and we've had this home now for, the second home for 10 years. And so we appreciate what your commission's trying to do to retain the authenticity of, of the city and its, its unique village community. Just around the time we found out that the roof had failed, State Farm notified us at our home in Arinda, that's our principal home, that they were canceling our insurance policy. And I immediately went to work to talk to them about the roof in Carmel, 'cause they insure both properties, and they told us absolutely not to go back to a wood roof, or we'd lose canceling that. Uh, the house in Arinda, uh, we're going through now with the California State Plan and the, and, uh, the premium to pay for that policy is about 40% more, plus an additional policy that required for differential conditions. So, um, that was weighing heavy on my mind when we decided to, uh, to talk to our architect who built the house, Mary Ann, and we talked about the architecture of the house, how we would fit in with the community, what, uh, the, the design of the house was, because it's open beam, we didn't want a lot of weight on that roof, um, and the fact that it was a cedar battening board, yeah, the metal standing roof seemed to be the most architecturally palatable alternative, and also lightweight and fireproof. So when we looked at this thing, we, we really thought about it for several months and did some studies, and, and now with looking at what's happening in LA, it just sort of reaffirms our selection to go to this standing metal. We were very conscious of the, the color and the SRI when we picked the color, and we think it's, uh, it's a, it's a good fit. We didn't need to do the whole house, actually, it was only the second story that was the most impacted, but we decided to do the whole thing so it looked like a finished product. So, um, uh, the product actually costs 50% more than to do an asphalt shingle, uh, which would have been approved if, had we gone ahead, but it was completely architecturally unacceptable. So, yeah, I think those are the main points I'd like to make.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Beretta. All right, um, members of the public can come forward at this time, make their comments
Neil Cruz, I heard a really great discussion earlier. I heard people in this planning commission saying, "We understand we need safety, but we don't want to see every house in Carmel with a metal roof." Is that where we're going today? When you look at that house, does that house scream standing seam metal roof to you? You know, the thing that keeps coming up for me in all of this is in 1990, 1991, with the 2016 committee and all of the arguments and the fights of those 15 people that went through for two years, we came out with one main statement, and that is, "If we do not resist trends, modern trends, with all we've got, we will not have anything left of Carmel." And now I see... And now I see why we said that. Please, don't let this town go to standing seam roofs everywhere. It'll be over.
Okay, any other members of the public like to make a comment? Nobody in the chamber? Any hands up online? Okay, I'm going to close the public comments, open it up to the commissioner for their comments. Who would like to start? Go ahead.
So this does not, I'm, I, I mean, just from everything, like from a design standpoint and from the, just the aesthetics and I, the, I don't, I don't understand why they're recommending a standing seam roof with this. So, so I would encourage some other choice because it, the, the standing seam metal for me with the current siding doesn't make sense. So I would think that it would be a good choice to choose the asphalt shingles, but I don't know why the architect did not want to go that direction.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Locke?
I would agree with you on that, but I'm going to stand by my previous comment and I think that we should wait until we have a new policy based on additional information. So I would support special condition 23 to find an alternative roofing material.
Commissioner Keripikoff, your comments?
Yeah, in this case, I, I didn't hear anything about the reason for replacing the roof being that the roof is failing. I think it's more of a insurance kind of discussion?
It has plates screwing it up.
Oh, that one, okay, that one, okay.
It's definitely failing.
That looks bad, yeah, okay. Yeah, I would, I would prefer, as Commissioner Locke said, I would prefer to wait until we have more kind of a policy, a deeper policy discussion and take some more organized and more systemic approach to this issue. But if that is the situation here with this roof, we have to make a decision today, I would say, okay, well, let's, let's do that. The color is fine, the seams, you know, if they can get them down to 1.5 inch, that's fine too. And I would love to see a rendering, how that's going to look with, because I cannot really imagine how the metal roof is going to work with siding, with a board and batten siding. If the architect is saying that that's the best combination, it would be nice to see a rendering. Yeah, thank you.
I'm going to be, for sake of consistency, I'm going to differ with staff and my fellow commissioners because I think that it hasn't been demonstrated that there is a lack of diversity by having the standing seam roof. I mean, there are some in the area, but, and I do agree with Neil, we don't want to have a town of all standing seam roofs. Diversity is part of this. But at this point, I'm not comfortable denying an applicant the right to put a fireproof roof on their house. And I think, and I'm differing with Commissioner Allen, I do think that a standing seam roof is appropriate for this, this particular style of architecture. But I understand that my opinion may be in the minority and I accept that. So I'm going to leave it to one of my other fellow commissioners to make a motion. We have a motion as per staff which is recommending another choice. So if we want to open that motion up, we can take a look at that.
It's on the screen.
We got it up on the screen.
Got it on there? Yeah, but that's not, that's just their recommendation, that's not, that's not the actual motion. I'm going to, I'm going to see the actual motion, the res, excuse me, the resolution. I'll get that thing to open up.
I'll miss.
There it is, okay.
Michael, may I?
All right, ahead.
Yeah, I move that we adopt the resolution proposed in the packet including special condition number 23 regarding the roofing material.
So is your motion to change?
Go ahead.
Is your motion to change the roofing material?
Special condition number 23 is prior to the issuance of a building permit, applicant shall submit a revised plan for review and approval by the planning commission identifying an alternative roofing material that complies with city codes.
I second that.
Mr. Chair, could I, could I add a little color to that? I'm sorry to interject.
Absolutely. I was going to call for any additional discussion.
Yeah, so one, just one thing noting for the commissioner, for the applicant, you know, one of, one of the materials that would not be considered an alternate material here would be a composition shingle roof, you know, similar to like what we just put on City Hall here, which is a wood sided building with the presidential style composition shingle. So the way the condition is written, if they, if the applicant continues to want an alternative material, some sort of metal or something that's alternative, we would then bring it back to the commission because Commissioner Locke just read the condition. We would bring that back to the commission. But if the applicant chooses to go with a material like, for example, on a historic building, when a wood shake roof is the appropriate, we, our Historic Resources Board and the Secretary of Interior Standards have found that a composition shingle roof is an acceptable alternative for like in-kind replacement for a historic resource. So if, if they chose to do a composition shingle, we would not come back to the planning commission. It's only if they want to have an alternate material. So I wanted to clarify why it's written that way. Thank you.
Agree, yeah.
An alternate material that is not, that doesn't comply with the city's codes and guidelines as specified by?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Planning Commission. Okay, so we have a motion to accept the resolution as presented by staff with no changes? Correct?
Correct.
Okay. You're shaking your head now.
And I second it.
Any further discussion?
No.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Keripikoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
And Chair LaPage?
No. Motion is carried. Okay, let's get back here to my agenda. All right. That brings us to item number six on the agenda. This is another design study, DS 24321. This is a Jensen Projects consideration of Track One Design Study referral for replacement wood shake roof on a two-story single frame residence with a vertical standing seam roof located at San Lucia Avenue to northeast of scenic. Can we have staff report, please?
This is a very similar presentation, so I'm going to go through quickly. Existing wood shake roof, it's been weathered and needs to be replaced. They're proposing a vertical standing seam with Sheffield medium bronze metal roof. There are, as I counted, three other metal roofs within 500 feet with the majority of them in the county, but I believe there's one down on scenic. They're proposing the medium bronze, we just saw the dark bronze in the previous presentation. The medium bronze is higher SRI. For this location, they are proposing a 1.5 inch seam and 16-inch aluminum panels. This is an example of, from the Sheffield Metal website, of what the medium bronze looks like when, when installed. The site did have nine neighbors reach out to support the metal roof. Their points of support ranged from fitting with the style of the neighborhood and the architecture, to not being very visible from the streets, to helping with reduced fire risk, and stating that it was durable and that there's a support from all nine people that reached out regarding this project. Staff has added condition 20, that the applicant can work with staff to choose an alternate material such as comp shingles or a material recommended by the planning commission so that it can be approved. If the commission determines that the metal roof would be appropriate for this house, then the condition can be struck, similar to the previous two. And with that, staff recommends you adopt the resolution with the special condition that the applicant works with staff on finding a new material. Thank you.
Okay, questions for staff? Don't see any, all right, thank you. Okay, I invite the applicant to come forward at this time, make their presentation.
Rob Nicely, Carmel Building Design, I'm the contractor on the job. Gretchen Fletcher is the architect and I believe that she's playing on commenting, but she's doing it remotely, so I thought I would step up now. This house is Mark Mill's house. As you guys probably know, it lost, I believe, its historical designation, probably sometime in the 90s when a lot of the features were removed that made it exceptional and it was deemed nonhistoric. We did a remodel on this house around 2000, maybe in the late 90s. It is a modern house, a 50s modern house. I believe that there are two Mark Mills houses, at least in town, that have standing seam roofs as the original equipment. I'm thinking about the ones at the corner of Uniporo and Rio Road, so we believe it's appropriate to the style of the house. As mentioned, you can't really, that notwithstanding, you can't really see the roof from anywhere except for the uphill property. With regard to the fitness to purpose, when we did this remodel, we were obliged to install doors and windows with high thresholds because it's facing the ocean directly. And so the horizontal ring can easily work its way into the structure, so the metal roof with the standing seam is especially appropriate here because the seams themselves being vertical are meant to make it harder for the water to infiltrate into the, the structure. So, and this is, in fact, this is the material, this is the color. That's all.
Thank you. Okay, the architect wants to make her presentation, go ahead.
Hi, this is Gretchen. I, I wanted to add a few things. I'm glad that Rob mentioned that it was a Mark Mills house and so it, there's a modern element to this house, or an eclectic modern house, if you, if you want to call it that, that I think that the standing seam roof is particularly appropriate for. The, the roof itself is not really seen from the street, given the, given the presentation of the gable end at the street. And it's, it's, so it's not a dominant view that you see. And I think that the, the roof itself is a, is a simple roof. It's a long gable and a simple roof, which I think is particularly appropriate for the metal roofing because it's not fussy and overly cut up. And I think that that has a lot to do with when it's appropriate and when it's not appropriate. So when you talk about the design of the house, when it lends itself for a metal roof, that's something to look at. The, the house has aluminum windows, is, like I said, it's more of a modern house, so it's more in keeping with, with the design. The owners themselves, they, they felt that, you know, there's environmental considerations for asphalt shingles that they, they don't feel comfortable with and didn't originally when they put the wood shakes on the house. The asphalt shingles being a petroleum product or, you know, it's a high energy used to produce them. And then they're not recyclable, so they're just more landfill, which we could do less of. I think that there's, there's a misconception that, that standing seam metal roofs, for some reason, are an inexpensive, low-cost type of roofing, which couldn't be further from the truth. This is a very premium roof system. And I think you're seeing a lot of applications for this because there has been so many alternative products put on the market that have failed and that have left homeowners without warranty and in a predicament where those materials aren't available. If they need to add on or replace something, they're just not available anymore. So people are very gun shy at this point to try new materials. It's, it's become a problem. I understand there's still slate and clay tile and flat tiles, there's a variety of things available. All of those take a much heavier structure to support. So metal roofing is a reasonable alternative. I think that's pretty much what I have to say. I, I, I think if you're concerned about when it's appropriate, when it's not, this to me seems like a house when it is appropriate, not to, not because it's my project that I'm supporting here, but, but I think that we have to look at the, the overall structure of the house and how it lends itself and, and the visibility of that roof. And I think this one is, is a pretty good example of when it works. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Okay. Members of the public, can make your comments at this time? Come forward.
Hi there, my name is Micah Hill and I live in Carmel now, full-time. I've had a home here for 16 years. I built a home 13 years ago in Carmel Building and Design, built it, was the first passive home in Carmel. It's, I think it was the first lead platinum home in Carmel and I think it might have been the first metal roof in Carmel. Sorry about that. It was probably the first. So, but it's, I sent pictures and I sent a letter in advance of this meeting and showed my home, the day I took the pictures was Sunday, showed the home so that people could see that, some 13 years later, it really, it looks exactly as it did when we first built the home. So it doesn't really change color. And that was the concern when we built it, when you approved it, that you were concerned it would get rusty or would start to have a patino about it and it would start to, the paint would crack and that isn't the case. With the Jensen's home, I didn't realize it was shingle until they brought it to my attention because when you walk around that home, you can't see the rooftop from any, any angle, including scenic. So when they started talking to me about changing the roof, because they had to, they, they started zeroing in on what would be the most sustainable option and they zeroed in on doing a metal roof. And I just want to be here to support the fact that I think it would be a great house to have a metal roof. The other thing I'd like to say is, when we first started visiting Carmel by the Sea, which was probably in 1978, it was a city or a town with all shingle roofs. And there wasn't hardly anything else but shingle, wooden shingle roofs. So it's kind of nice to see some change and to go in different options, but I think the metal roofs are here to stay and I couldn't be happier because I have a lifetime guarantee on my roof. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else from the chamber want to speak to us about this application? Okay, I don't see anybody coming forward, not see any hands up online? Not see any? Okay, I'm going to close the public comments, open it up to the commission. Commissioner Keripikoff, want to kick it off again?
No comments, no.
No comments? Okay. Do you have, are you in support of, of the resolution as per staff or you?
Yeah, that one, that one I would support because it's really difficult to see that roof.
You support the applicant's request? Okay. Commissioner Allen, your comments?
I would like to see something more creative. Is there a way of doing a metal roof that doesn't look like a mass manufactured painted metal? So I would be, I would be suggesting that we go with something different.
Okay, and Commissioner Locke?
I don't really have any more to say on this one other than I do understand that this is kind of unique because it's not visible, which to me, that's a big plus, but I will stand by my previous actions.
So you're in support of the, of staff's position?
Yes.
Okay. For consistency's sake, I am supportive of the applicant's request. It doesn't seem to me that diversity is, is an issue here because you really can't see the roof and the, their specific requirements because of the location, as the builder pointed out, in terms of the extreme conditions they have, I think it warrants the, this type of a roof. So, do we have a motion? Nobody's making a motion, so I'll make a motion that we accept the, we accept the applicant's request for the standing seam roof. So that would be a change to, we would change special condition or eliminate special condition number 20.
So, Mr. Chair, if I could just maybe restate that for clarity, so your, your
So your motion is to adopt the resolution as presented, however, strike condition number 20.
Right, and allow the applicant to have the roof that they had requested.
Thank you.
I'll second it. Okay, we have a motion made and seconded, any more discussion?
On the motion? Are you recommending that they reduce the glare down to below 25? Isn't this...
Is this one above 25?
This one's 31, it's the medium.
Yeah, okay, I would amend my motion that they have to go with a material that beats the 25 SIR or below.
Exactly.
Okay. That's my amended motion. And I'll second that. More discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Allen?
No.
Commissioner Keripetkov?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
No.
And Chair LePage?
Yes, the motion fails because we don't have a majority. So, we have a situation here, we can have an amended motion.
I will move.
We can continue it.
I'll move. I move at staff recommendation and the resolution, including special condition number 20.
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Keripetkov?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
And Chair LePage?
No, but the motion carries. Okay. Thank you, everyone. All right, that brings us... Is everybody good? We don't, we don't just keep going, we don't need a recess? Okay. Okay, that brings us to an item which is not a roof. Thank you. Thank you. Item number seven on our public hearing is a design study. This is DS 24164. It is also, has a variance associated with it. The variance is 24263, this is a brown project. Consideration of a concept, final and design study associated coastal development for substantial alterations to an existing single-family residence and a variance for modifications to the maximum site coverage regulations located on Scenic Road. Have staff report, please.
Thank you, Chair. So the subject site is a 5,762 square foot lot. It's located in the R1 Zone District. It's also located in the beach and riparian overlay as well as the park overlay. This property, or the project, excuse me, does not include any floor area addition or changes to the building's massing, but it is a substantial alteration, which is defined as any visual change, exterior design modification, or addition to a building's structure or change to an architectural style. Therefore, it does qualify as a track-two project. Additional project components include site coverage changes, which does include a variance as well as landscape modifications. So there is one significant cypress tree on the property. The photo is just the image of the trunk area. There are some proposed modifications to the project plans through conditions of approval. Right now, there is some grading that is proposed within the six-foot tree protection zone. So we do have conditions of approval that require modification and setback, additional setback being six foot away from the base of the tree. So that is what these two figures are illustrating, that there should be no cut, fill, or impermeable surfaces within six feet of that tree. And this diagram illustrates the structural root zone, which is approximately 32 feet, and that is the area for which effectively hand-digging is required. So no heavy machinery shall be used for excavation as a means to protect that tree. There is a recommended tree density for sites over 5,000 square feet. That's four upper canopy and three lower canopy trees. However, the characteristics of the site, protection of significant public views, scenic corridors, and the existing tree canopy may warrant lower number of total trees or only lower canopy trees. So there's a condition of approval for the applicant to meet this tree density requirement, but also to work with planning and forestry staff to identify the appropriate number of trees. So as you can see, because of that significant cypress, which overhangs the property, there might be not the ability to plant additional upper canopy trees. And then obviously, because of the location, additional views may be impacted by planting upper canopy trees. So we might just be planting lower canopy trees and much fewer trees than may otherwise be recommended. And because of the location within the overlay districts, we do have a requirement for a much more substantial landscaping requirements, which require new native trees, as well as 75% of all landscaped areas on the property visible from the park be planted with drought-tolerant plants or native species. And the park being the scenic pathway as well as the beach. So effectively, the front area of the property will need to be entirely landscaped. As you can see from this partial site plan, right now, it's just proposed to be mulched, so these mulched areas will need to be landscaped. And these are implemented through condition of approval number 22. So in respect to privacy and views, staff did not identify any view impacts. Staff is also not contacted by any of the adjacent property owners. However, in respect to privacy, we did hear from this southern neighbor who did state that they felt that there was a privacy impact as a result of the proposed deck. This little red box right here is where these two photos were taken from. In respect to privacy, the proposed deck is really the only potential privacy impact, so the commission should consider the potential impact as a result of the proposed deck. In terms of the finished materials, the applicant is proposing to completely remove all the siding off the building and effectively reskin the building. We do have a number of changes to the building. The building will be sided with a new stucco siding with stone accents on the front. The new roof will be a presidential shake roof, a charcoal-black finish. Metal windows and doors are proposed throughout, as well as a space decking with a glass guardrail. Our residential design guidelines do state that composition shingles that convey a color and texture similar to that of wood shingles may be considered on some architectural styles. So we do have a condition of approval that recommends changing the color of the asphalt shingles, which has been typical with recent direction. The charcoal-black color has not been supported on past projects, so that would just be consistent with recent direction of the commission. And then there is no condition of approval as it relates to windows. This is just for discussion and consideration. However, the residential design guidelines do state that, excuse me, window styles and materials should be consistent with the architecture of the building. Divided light windows are encouraged, and materials other than authentic unclad wood are appropriate only when it can be demonstrated that the proposed material is more appropriate to the architecture. So in this case, the windows throughout do not have divisions, and they are proposed to be a metal material. So that is just something for you to consider, whether it's appropriate to the architecture of the building. A variance is also proposed for site coverage. The maximum allowable is 756 square feet, where just over 1,000 square feet are proposed. The applicant did submit a letter, which was included in the staff report, supporting the variance findings, which are outlined on the screen. Staff is supportive of the variance as proposed by the applicant and recommends approval. So that would be effectively 261 square feet of additional permeable or semi-permeable site coverage for a total of 1,017 square feet. Effectively, what the applicant is asking for is relief from this walkway area due to the topographic constraint. As you saw on the slide, the site today, there's a sloping area from the driveway down here up to the primary building entry, located at the rear of the property. This is just an estimation. So this area, the walkway stair area is 260, I dimensioned it as 268 square feet. Again, it's just an estimation, and the relief there of requesting is 261 square feet. And just some potential questions. All of the circulation elements on the site have been reduced to the greatest extent feasible. So the driveway has been made into tire strips as recommended by the residential design guidelines. If the deck and patio below were removed entirely, with all else remaining the same, the proposed site coverage would be 617 square feet, which is less than the maximum allowed. And if the deck and patio below were reduced to an amount which comply with the site coverage limits, the deck would project about four feet eight inches. So that would be the outline if everything were to comply. This isn't a recommendation for what it should look like, it's just illustrative example only. And then again, we did receive some correspondence from the southern neighbor. Just to summarize, they had some concerns regarding the materials, that the windows and doors should be wood or aluminum clad wood, and the roof should be a more natural color. And they also expressed concerns with the deck, the scale, privacy impacts, and then also suggested that the variance should not be approved. And with that, staff recommends the planning commission adopt the resolution as described on the screen. And then I also just noted a summary of the key items from the staff report and the presentation, as I know. That was quite a bit in a short period of time. Happy to answer any questions.
Hey Evan, they're not doing anything with that falling down stone wall in the front?
So that's proposed to be reconstructed? Which I think you can see. So these will all be removed and then reconstructed as a new stone retaining wall?
And so the one...
Oh, sorry, or did you mean this one?
That's it.
No, that's proposed to remain.
Okay. And so is that the city's responsibility? Because it says within the city right-of-way there. Is that the city's responsibility, or is that their responsibility?
If I zoom in, you can see it's partially on, over the property line and partially located on private property.
It looks like if you touched it, it would fall down.
When someone builds an encroachment, basically whether it's, whether this is a permitted encroachment or it's old enough that it doesn't have a permit, when you, a property owner, build something or even install landscaping in the right-of-way, you become responsible for that. So if the wall were to fall or need maintenance, it'd be the property owner's responsibility.
Okay.
And part of the encroachment process is having insurance that indemnifies the city, correct?
That's the current process, but like I said, I can't speak to how old this is or if there's an encroachment permit for it. But that's why we do what we do now, that we get indemnification because legally, it's their structure in our land.
So there were no permits for what I could, would actually consider to be relatively extensive remodel. Are there permits now?
So there were permits. The applicant went beyond the scope of work.
And so...
So you'll notice at the top of the document, it refers to a design study number DS 22-307.
Evan, which document are you referencing?
So what Commissioner Allen is referring to is, on the site tour, we noticed there was some unpermitted work from 2022. A stop-work order was posted on the property. And the work has, I suppose, yet to be corrected. It's still an open violation. So some questions came up as to the status of that. And there was a note in the property file, basically clarifying what had occurred. Basically, a memo to the file. And it says, "City Planning and Building has received an inquiry about DS 22-307 from a concerned resident." And then it goes on to explain the result of the inspection. But there was a design study approval, as well as an associated permit. However, what happened was the applicant went beyond the scope of the approval.
And so how does that work now, then? What do they do now? Do they go...
So effectively, this would be, all of that work would be going away. The applicant's proposing to re-side the building. So what we saw, that new siding, the new white siding, would be coming off the building. All those lights are being removed, all the siding is being removed, the windows are being removed with a new project.
Is all the electrical and all the, was that part of the original permit?
I don't recall, however... We do have a electrical plan. I don't think it's on this one, I think it's on the landscaping plan. And I think you're referring to the area in here? By the doorways, these are all new. So all of that site coverage would be coming out and being replaced with new stone paving.
So I have a question for you. So I know that this memo that we're talking about right now was from 2022. When was the back addition made to the building?
I don't recall, but if you look at the last sentence of the paragraph titled "Inspection Results"...
Yeah, I understand that, but that was 2005 survey. And what, when was the addition put on the building? Because it's clear that there's an addition.
I would have to go through the property file.
Okay, and that's fine, because I think I understand that. I tried to get in and I couldn't get it before the meeting, so... Yeah, I would like to know when that addition was put on.
Well, it seems to me, from looking at it, I mean, they've built an addition in the setback. And it's, I don't see how that could have been permitted.
So again, I can only go back to 2005 in this moment.
So the permit, was there a permit on this addition in 2005?
So there is a design study application in 2022.
In 2022? And what was approved?
I can pull it up really quickly if you just give me one moment.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, do you want to take testimony from the applicant? While Evan, he's going to have to get online and do this. Do you want to do that, or do you want to wait? It's certainly up to you, you can wait.
How much time is it going to take?
Just two minutes.
Okay. Well, I think that this affects, you know, the whole project. So I'm a little bit hesitant to continue until we get this information.
And Chair LePage, this might be more research than what can be done at this meeting?
If it's, all right, I'll... If there's no more questions for staff, I'm going to invite the applicant to come out and make their presentation at this time, and we'll give staff more time once they come back.
Thank you, my name's Eric Miller, I'm the architect on the project. First of all, we didn't get involved until 2024, so we had nothing to do with the original work that was done. We were just asked to come in, design the deck, and... We were just asked to come in, design the deck and come back to the, you know, city with an application. So that's why we're here. So, you know, basically it's an existing non-conforming house. You know, we're consistent in, as far as I know, with all the setbacks, height coverage, lot, floor ratio, we're not asking to change any of that. So all we're really asking to do is to change the site coverage itself. So we're talking about a reduction in the site coverage. So there's an existing 2,236 non-permissible site coverage right now on the property. And we're proposing to knock that down to 1,019, which then means we have a reduction of 1,219 square feet. And that would include a 261 square foot variance. I think we're all at the site today and it's obvious that the entry really needs to be in the back. It's a very long journey to the back. There's a delta of 10 feet from the front to the back entry. The house is a split level. So we use that 261 square feet to get up to the entry. And so we're hoping that the, that the planning commission will approve that tonight. Also, we'd be willing to replace that retaining wall out in the street if that's a condition and that's something the city would like to see. I'm sure my client would be happy to do that. You know, the house design is a modern, more contemporary house. So, you know, we like to keep the metal windows. We think it is more appropriate and we're happy to, you know, work with staff to change the color of the roofing material. So essentially, we agree with everything in the staff report and, you know, we'd like to see this thing approved tonight.
Any questions for the architect?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Eric. Okay. Members of the public, come forward this time, make their.
My name's Steve Brown. I'm your property owner. So I can shed some light on your questions about the house. We purchased the property probably five years ago. The house was built in, the house was built in like 45. And originally what that property was, was a tennis court. That furthest, the part that you guys kind of walked behind between the back of the house and the neighbor, that fence where that setback is so tight, that used to be the, like the pro shop or the warming house. And then the house that was, is directly to the south, they own that. So it was, it was a much bigger property and that was their personal tennis court. So then when that property was spun off and subdivided, then, and I think the records are showing the city, because when we, before we bought the house, we went down there and looked at the file, there's, they added on to that warming house, if you will, or pro shop, or whatever you want to call it, and built then the rest of the house forward. So that's, all that, everything that you see there has been there since, since the 40s. So where we got into trouble was when we, we had a permit to replace the windows and we couldn't find siding to match the existing, so it's redwood siding. We couldn't get a siding that matched the same profile. So we replaced, where we replaced the windows, we replaced that siding. And as soon as we touched that siding, that's where we got, we didn't realize that we were going to get in trouble for doing that. So that's what kind of started the whole thing. That's where we got red tagged and, you know, so. But since then, we've gotten a permit. We're in the midst of this permit. I talked to the inspector the other day. I said, you know, we haven't done any work on this house in a year. We're waiting for this additional work to get approved. Do you want me to close out this permit now or do you want it to, should I leave it open? And he said, I don't care what you do. He says, we can close it all at once or we can, and you can leave it open or if you feel like you want to close it now before we start the rest of the work. He says, that's up to you.
So just so I can understand what you're saying. So the footprint of the house as it is, that's how it was when you bought?
Exactly how it is.
Okay. And so the, and then you, the siding, you wanted to remodel the back or something? Why did you replace the siding?
We were replacing.
You're going to replace the windows? And then you're obviously doing some interior remodeling?
Yeah, we had.
Because the kitchen, it looks like the kitchen's being worked on.
Yeah, we had a permit to change out the cabinets to.
But the footprint was there?
Footprint is exactly how it was. It hasn't changed. And I agree. I mean, part of this permit then, when we touched that siding, is we had to pull off that siding and then put in a one hour fire barrier within three feet of that back property line. So I could have pointed it out to you, but there's a vertical line where we stopped, pulled off that siding, put dense glass on the side of the house, up and, you know, enclosed the soffit and the fascia and then re-sided it. So that was, that's part of the permitted work, the work that we had to do to bring it up to code.
All right, well, that's really helpful.
And does this work include like ensuring that the retaining walls in the back are all, because they look like they need some more?
I don't know who's retaining that wall, who's retaining wall that is. We just haven't gotten to, I mean.
I think it's yours, right? No?
Like the fence that separates us from the property to the south, right in that entryway there?
Like as you're walking behind in that really tight space between?
I know what you're talking about.
Let's talk about the fence.
I'm not exactly sure whose that is. I'd have to look. I mean, we had it surveyed. But put it this way, it hasn't been the first thing on my list. I mean, this has kind of been a distraction. So I'm trying to get, I'd like to use the property. I've owned it for, you know, a fair amount of time and we've yet to spend a night in it. So, you know, we'd like to get it into a, you know, a condition that you could, you know, use it. So that's, it's part of the reason why we didn't, we're perfectly aware that that retaining wall in the front needs to be repaired, replaced and repaired. But, I mean, that's a significant ask, you know, given everything, you know, that happens here. I mean, you know, if I could go and get a permit, say I'm going to replace this wall as is, and if it was that easy, I would have done it already. But it's not that easy.
I have a question for you. In light of the comments from the neighbor to the south, I think that, you know, your current proposal is for a deck that is 15 feet toward the west.
Yeah, correct.
And it looked to me like the neighbor's windows that I think they're concerned about, that that could be allayed by perhaps reducing about six feet of this deck. Would that be something you would entertain at all?
Here's my problem. Beautiful house. She is built, she's chosen to build to the front of the property. You know, we didn't choose to build to the back of property, but that's how it is. She's taken, that house is taking our view to the south. We've got no view to the south. By building that house where it was, she's also taken the view from the property to the north of her. So the property to her north sees nothing south. The property, our property to the, excuse me, the property to the south sees nothing north and the property to the north sees nothing south. And she's complaining about a window in a sitting room when she's got 30, 40 feet of glass across the front of her house? I mean, how about a top down, bottom up shade?
Wanted to ask. Thanks.
Right? Anything else?
No, that's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else from the public? Eric, do you want to, well, let's let, Eric, why don't you wait and then we'll let the rest of the public and you can come back and answer questions. Anyone else in the public like to make any comments regarding this?
Yo Cruz, I noticed that we're moving again more towards the glass, 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 glass. If we had panes on the windows to the right, that would considerably make this more like a traditional house consistent with the village character instead of all clear glass with all clear railings. Otherwise, I think they've done a good job. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else from the public like to make any comments regarding this application?
Rob Nicely, Carmel Building and Design. Just to clear something up, I did the remodel on that house to the south and the current owner didn't build the house more towards the west. That's the way she bought it. So the statement is factually incorrect that she built the house forward to the front of the property. She just bought the house.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any comments in the chamber? Anybody online? Okay. Eric, you want to come up and make your final comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that the, according to the survey, that retaining wall's on the property to the east. So in other words, the wall is actually on the property behind them, the house that we're talking about. So you'd have to go talk to that homeowner before you could replace that wall in the narrow area that you guys walked past. So that was all I had.
Okay, thank you.
So can I ask a clarifying question?
Eric, you have another question here for you?
So even though this retaining wall in the back, the failing one, is just like a foot away from the house, it still belongs to the property to the east?
Yes, uh huh. That's the survey. Shows that.
Okay.
Wow, that is very tight.
It's very close, yeah.
That's very close.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, I'm going to close the public comments. Did staff find anything or?
Yeah, I have some information to share if you're still interested.
Okay. Okay, good.
So I wasn't able to find the complete set of plans, but it does show the property with the house at the rear, with the tennis court area. And it notes area of property for proposed building site. So we do have that original house at the rear, the tennis court site, and then the future home in the front with a very narrow setback.
Is there a date on those plans?
Yes, it was 1945.
Oh, yeah.
Then there's some more information.
That was all that was in there or?
In terms of old plans, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to pull this over from the other screen. So this was the old design study approval from 2022. Modify interior finishes to include new interior doors, flooring, cabinets, associated plumbing and electrical, replace existing exterior windows, skylights and siding to match existing. Work to be completed at the owner's suite and kitchen only. Only rest of houses to remain as is. So that was that area at the rear that we were looking at.
Was that a track one?
That was a track one.
Yeah, okay.
And then the last thing to share, these are just some images from the code compliance inspection. So that's the stop work order that's posted on site. I'm not sure what this is. But you can see the, the door is being replaced. This was that area of work that we were concerned about. And then again, here. So this was again dated around the end of 2022.
Heather, question for you. On the GIS, the large plans page, is, so were you able to locate the construction? Because I'm looking at this and it's showing that the area for the proposed building site is, it looks like it's in red, which would exclude that house area. I'm wondering if that was originally proposed to be torn down as part of the construction?
Yeah, I'm not sure. I, it looks like here there is a survey. Again, it's a rather thin file in terms of the plans. The actual documents and records is 129 pages, which might have a little more detail in terms of what we're actually looking for. It's also has some documents mixed in with the neighboring property, unfortunately. I think just because it was a shared site at one point. But I don't, I don't see any immediate evidence that leads me to, to, you know, think anything of the contrary.
Okay. That's all the information you have to share with us, Evan?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. I've closed the public comments, opened it up to the commissioners. Commissioner Locke, would you like to begin?
Sure.
Why not?
Yeah. No, I, given the information that we have right now on that back area, which by the way, just it, by appearances, it looks like it's an addition of that whole back area. If it truly was something that was put in prior to any of the enforcement on setbacks and whatnot, clearly we can just let that go. My thoughts about all of this, I have no problem with the proposal. I think that the black roof needs to obviously change color to a lighter color. The only thing I really noted was that the proposed new doors are again, large doors. They're eight foot high, they 12 foot wide, 14, and I know they're sliders. But the rest, it looks like basically the rest of the property is under the, I guess, bedroom number two has, there's a couple of eight foot doors. Anyway, that was just the only thing that really stood out in my mind. I don't, because of the location of this property, I am not going to have a problem with windows on that front area. You're blessed to have such a great view. And I think that the only thing I would recommend is that perhaps some kind of privacy screening on the deck, you know, the railing of the deck to alleviate the neighbor of any concerns while you're sitting out there. But those are my comments.
Okay, Commissioner Kere Petkov?
I'm still trying to understand kind of the story behind this project. It looks like they're trying to remodel in two stages, very similar to the way I'm doing my remodel, starting from the back and moving to the front. So I understand remodeling the back of the house, second level. How about the first level? Is the first level remodeled as well? Like the back of the first level where you have this bedroom and utilities room?
So my understanding is the, there is no level below what we saw.
Well, in the plan, are they going to dig it out later?
No.
Because it's in the plan here, there is a bedroom and utilities room on the lower level.
It stops about halfway back.
Yeah, but it's directly under the kitchen.
Correct, and then it stops there.
Oh, okay. So anyway, so the idea of remodeling from the back to the front makes a lot of sense. That's the way I do it too, because you don't want to break the new stuff when you remodel the front first and then remodel the back. You remember our conversation we had with Sullivan about the way it works with permits? You have to get a final inspection and close the permit of the second phase to get a, what is that certificate of occupancy before you move to the next stage of the project? So I think that's something that they need to do. And yeah, if that's, if that's the intention, if that's the plan, and I hope it is, then I understand the logic of it. Otherwise, I'm a little bit confused why they're doing certain things. Now, in terms of, when you do projects in two stages, you end up with the situations with site coverage that where you, you know, the final, the final state is, you know, the interim state is not exactly what the final state, so you have to bridge this thing. So I understand the site coverage element. If we can, I'm not sure for the variance, they probably need to go to city council or not? No? Okay. So we can give them the variance here for the entrance. I mean, did. I mean, definitely there's a way to make the entrance closer to the front and maybe move this bedroom towards the back, the one on the main level in the middle, that is kind of part of the living room. So I'm not sure, maybe the architect can tell us if that's that inconvenient. He's at like 10 feet, going 10 feet up? That's a lot of steps. So maybe that's inconvenient. Yeah, I would like to see any alternate, you know, a discussion about any alternative solutions that will allow us not to do variance. That's probably the only variable that I see here. And also kind of a confirmation that what they're trying to accomplish is this remodeling stages, starting from the back and moving to the front, then the whole thing will make sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm just looking at these elevations. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner. Forgot about you over there.
So I would, I would want the roof color to change. I would want the window and door size to come down and reduce the size of the deck. And I don't support any variance on site coverage.
What would you do about the entry? Do you have any, I mean, do you have any thoughts about that? That's kind of what's driving the
Yeah, I think they would have to rethink it.
Okay. Okay. I was, I didn't really, there wasn't much jumping out about this that I didn't support, other than I started looking at these elevations, and I know they've got some divided light windows and some that aren't. And so there's some inconsistencies there. You know, the guidelines talk about this. You know, if you're going to be contemporary, you need to be one or the other. So there's, I see some inconsistencies there. I mean, I see the need for the variance and all the findings have been made. So I don't have a problem with the variance. I don't think the deck has a significant impact on the neighbor to the, to the south. And it seems to me that they have basically an opportunity to to have the views to the west and to the south. And those small windows are still going to enjoy views to the, to the north. So I don't really see the significance of that. We don't have a situation here where we've got any, we're increasing any non-conformities. So I mean, those are my thoughts on it. We've got a, what do we got for a resolution here? Special conditions? Let's take a look at that. So we have some draft conditions here. What do we got? Special conditions. Pretty standard. Restriction plan modification, retrieves, demolition, non-conformities. Rule exec site coverage, all site coverage not shown on the approved proposed site plan shall be removed from the site prior to final inspection. Questions regarding inclusion of, exclusion of site coverage, of site coverage shall be directed. I thought we had a variance here.
Chair, I'd be happy to answer that.
Am I misunderstanding this? We've got two, we have one resolution which combines a design approval and a variance, correct?
That's correct. So in condition of approval, number one, it's the authorization. One is the design study authorization, and then the second part is the variance authorization. And then in terms of the condition you were just reading about removal of the non-approved site coverage, there are parts on the site, as we were walking around, you may have noticed there was old asphalt. I don't know what it was from, for example, that should be removed prior to final inspection.
Okay, so that's the intent of that special condition, correct?
Chair, do you mind if I ask the applicant something as I'm looking through the plans? And based on the
Yes, go ahead.
Prior authorization we just saw, I'm curious about something. Eric, I'm noticing the plans say windows to remain, existing windows to remain. Is the intent to replace the windows throughout, or are some of the existing windows proposed to remain as, as is?
So when we got involved, the, our client asked us to do the work on the front. And obviously, as you've seen, there was some work done on the back. And that's why there's an inconsistency with, with the true divided lights in the back. So we were asked to work on the front, and that's was kind of the scope of our work. So, you know, that's, that's why that's that way. So either you'd have to replace all the windows with the same design that's in the front, or you would have to, you know, allow the back to be different, which is not seen from the street. So that is what the, that's what Michael's talking about on this site elevation. But that wasn't a choice we made. That's
That's how, that's how the design process went.
Yeah, that's how the process went, based on the fact they did some work.
And they had a permit, they had a permit for this other work, and you weren't, you're focusing on, on the new part.
That's correct.
Okay. Does that answer your question?
It does. And with that information, I am going to recommend to the commission to add an additional condition. We do have a design guideline that speaks to consistency throughout, just that windows match in terms of, I actually believe I have it as part of my presentation. Windows styles and materials should be consistent with the architecture of the building. Windows styles and materials should be uniform throughout a building. That's condition of a design guideline 9.11.
Okay, all right.
So a condition to that effect.
That's where I was going, okay.
Does that help?
Yeah, yes, that does. Thank you very much.
So as I understand it, I understand staff's position, it needs to be consistent so they would have the option of either going with divided lights throughout or taking the divided light ones out. Staff, is that, is that a fair interpretation on my part?
I think it's beyond the divisions, but also the general appearance of the window.
So they need to be consistent in terms of height and style and so forth?
The make, or I guess the general appearance, the color. Well, the windows we saw were white, for example. The new proposed, the new proposed windows are bronze.
Okay.
And I don't recall the other material. I think they might have been aluminum clad. These new metals are
But, but still, if they, if they achieve consistency,
Correct.
They could go, they could use the theme in the back and carry it forward. Or if they want to use the theme that's proposed, then they're going to have to change more than just the divided lights. You're going to have to change the design for staff. The materials, materials are inconsistent.
It just needs to be consistent throughout.
And the design of those windows in terms of the heights and the way the front is proposed.
Yeah, yes.
Because the ones in the front are pretty much full height all the way up to the plate line, it looks like.
It's not uncommon for us to see some windows with divisions and some without, depending on, you know, the size of the window, the style of the window. My, my concern was, I guess, the color and the actual style of the window.
Okay.
The, the material, the color, the, the design, the actual design of the window.
Okay. All right, thank you. So with that information, do we have any more comments from the commissioners? As far as their support for this particular
Yeah, can I add one thing?
Yeah, go ahead.
That I definitely would like to see that retaining, or the wall on scenic repaired and brought back into its
Okay, so that would be an additional special condition?
Yes. So I've been watching that deteriorate.
Okay, so
I would suggest if I could, Mr. Chair, if that, if that becomes a condition to add the language that if, if an encroachment permit is needed to
Also obtain a, yes, absolutely.
Or move it back onto the property, one or the other.
Because is it necessary?
I don't know.
Oh, I see.
Just looking at the plans, my speculation is that it looks like they tried to get as close to the property line as they could, but it looks like there's a tree there. And I'm guessing when they were building it, that it had to jog out to protect the roots. That's just my guess. I don't know for sure, but yeah.
Okay, so staff special condition would be number 39, am I correct? That the applicant must provide a design where the window, the windows are, and doors are consist, of a consistent material and design throughout?
Yeah, revise the plans to achieve a consistent window, windows throughout, something to that effect.
Windows and doors.
I don't have the recommendation in front of me, whatever.
38 is roof color, and then that would be 39.
And then 40?
40 would be that the the retaining wall on the west is encroached?
Yeah, it's a west. Northwest corner.
Northwest corner, be replaced, and if required, and of course, and encroachment permit be applied for. So staff would give that? Okay. All right, I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we make a motion. Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Allen? No. Commissioner Kerpetkov?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
And Chair LaPage?
Yes, motion is carried. Thank you. Okay. Brings us to, I think, our last item. Which is, you know, I'm sorry, but I'm going to have to call a at least a five minute recess because
Got to call.
That's right. I've been sitting here. Yeah, okay, 7:45. We will reconvene. Thank you.
You can go first.
Do you think that they're doing this on stages like a model in the house?
Do you think that they're doing this on stage, like on a model in the halls?
Sure, yeah. If you...
...
I guess you want to give your staff report?
We'll make it brief.
Yeah.
All right, so the subject application has been considered three times previously. All three hearings were continued with direction to the applicant to revise the project, primarily to address view impacts to the northern neighbor. The applicant has, instead of following the December 11th hearing, requested denial in lieu of continuation in order to pursue an appeal. The municipal code states, in part, that applicants unwilling to make the revisions directed by the Planning Commission may request denial of the project so that an appeal may be filed, and that a denial shall not be complete until findings are adopted. As such, staff has prepared findings for denial based on the ongoing discussion at the previous hearings and plans considered at the December 11th, 2024 hearing. So effectively, we are asking you to adopt a finding for denial, and you are denying the plans that were presented at the December 11th, 2024 hearing. So based on the findings for denial, staff is recommending denial of concept finding number five, which is projects are consistent with the city's design objectives for public and private views, and will retain a reasonable amount of solar access for neighboring sites through the placement, location, and size of windows, doors, and balconies. The design respects the rights to reasonable privacy on adjoining sites. The commission may also want to consider concept design finding number six, which relates to consistency with the goals, objectives, and policies related to the design and the general plan. This was not part of the resolution, however, it's just something for you to consider. Policy 1-51 states in parts, "Avoid designs that are insensitive to the designs of neighboring buildings. Attempt to achieve an equitable balance of these design amenities along all properties affected by designer view decisions." And because the project did not meet concept finding number five, it does not meet the coastal development permit findings. Our design guidelines are part of our LCP, so therefore, the project does not comply with our local coastal program. This is just an illustration, and the design guidelines stated, "So the commission may adopt a resolution for denial as prepared by staffed. Adopt a resolution for denial as prepared by staffed with any adopted or additional or supplemental findings. Please provide direction in your motion accordingly." For example, if you want to adopt finding number six, or you can continue with direction to staff to prepare a revised resolution based on any discussion. For example, you may choose to approve the project based on our previous discussions. At the last hearing, we did bring forward an application or a resolution for a project approval. If you'd like to reconsider that, you can. If you would like to continue the project with another finding for denial, you can. If you want to just continue the hearing, you certainly can as well. In terms of the appeal process, there is a 10 working day appeal period following the Planning Commission's decision. The appeal would be then filed with the city clerk to be considered by the city council. And then, once all of local appeals are exhausted, the project can be appealed to the California Coastal Commission because the project site is located within the appeals jurisdiction. And with that, staff's recommending that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution denying the project as described on the screen. And that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, questions for staff?
What happens, what is the outcome that they're looking for with the appeal? Do they think that the city council will approve? They cannot approve the project if there's a problem with the neighbor, right?
I think that's a better question for the applicant, sir.
Yeah. I don't know what they're hoping to achieve.
Okay. With that, I will invite the applicant to come forward and make their presentation.
I'm Justin Hastings, spoke earlier. I am a contractor working with the client for the project. And obviously, as you know, you haven't denied or approved the project, and the hopes would be that maybe you might take some reconsideration in this project based on some facts that I'm hoping to share with you today. First, we have two people involved in this process, our clients, the Limms and the McCalls that live directly north. I've been in both properties, viewed them. The McCalls have been here about five years, as they had mentioned, locally, our client 13 years. When they bought the property, each person got a deed, deeds were obviously reviewed, and in nowhere is there a scenic easement protection to either property, one giving or one receiving. The McCalls have a 1,562 square foot house, three bed, two bath, two-story home. Our client has a 768 square foot house, two bed, two bath, one story. And she's asking to build a 1,505 square foot house, something very, very similar to the McCalls with a garage. The view issue has obviously been the concern. We've actually done a redesign on this project four times. The first time was going to the McCalls directly before coming to the commission with the hopes that maybe we could have some insight from them. It was at their request. We then done three more redesigns of the project and submitted them to you for review. Some commentary by staff, or not staff, but by, the commission was that we didn't make any significant changes to the design, but in fact, we lowered the building by four feet, we moved it back eight feet, and we moved it away from their property an additional four feet, changing floor plans, changing locations of rooms, changing all sorts of things to really try to accommodate the view thing because we recognize the importance of that request. Obviously, the view has been repeatedly brought up as an issue, and all times, the McCalls have stated that their view is being impacted from their breakfast nook, and that they don't want to sit there and see, you know, the house that they're looking at. Their breakfast nook is sitting on their most kind of easterly part of their property and is 48 square feet of their home. So 48 square feet of a 1,562 square foot house is being impacted by the view. Every aspect of the front of the property is not being impacted. We've moved this building back, we've accommodated many, many things, and kind of the key to the view, a significant view, is how it's listed in the guidelines, and the question would be, what's a significant view? You know, neither person, the Limms or the McCalls, are looking at the ocean. They're looking at the valleys, looking at the mountains. They have a nice forest view that most all of us that live in Carmel have. And it's a shared view. The Limms have the right to that same shared view. When they build their house, they should have the view, and limiting their ability to build a two-story house would not allow them to have that view. They would be looking out the windows at a fence or something there. Now, you know, so we researched a variance. Okay, let's move, because the McCalls have stated very clearly that the only way they're going to be agreeable to a second story on this property is if we move it to the very rear of the property. When we do that, we don't comply with the overall heights of the structure. We ask, well, how do we do a variance? We wouldn't qualify for a variance because no condition of that site is creating the need for the variance. If the variance is being created because of a view issue with a neighboring property, so our variance would be denied. The only way to make a height work would be plate heights about five feet tall, and that's not a reasonable request to our client. So, you know, as we kind of sit and look at the situation, our client wants to be able to have the same thing the McCalls have, a 1,505 square foot house. She's entitled to doing it. The only way she can do it is by having two stories. You cannot build a 1,505 square foot house on a 100 by 40-foot lot in Carmel and have a garage as required without a two-second story. We can't move the second story back because we don't meet the planning requirement. So we're stuck in this very significant quandary of trying to accommodate the McCalls, which I believe we have. I've been in the house, and we have moved this building back. We have assured that their view from 85% to 90% of the front of that house is going to be protected, and we're sharing the view. She's going to get it, the Limms, and the McCalls are going to get it too. So my only rule of question I have to the commission is, what is the 48-square-foot view? How is that more important than our client being able to build and have the same exact thing that they do, a 1,500-plus-square-foot house? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, members of the public, I'd like to invite you to come up and make your comments.
Hey, guys. Mike McCall, neighbor just to the north of Mrs. Lim that Justin was talking about. If I didn't live in my house, I would maybe potentially buy what Justin just tried to sell you, but I live there every day. And Justin was there one time when I was not there, but he talked to my wife and tried to explain how things work in Carmel, but I haven't worked in his favor. You guys have all seen my house more times than Justin has, and I think that it's fair to say that it's a gross overstatement to say that we're talking about 48 square feet because that's not the case. I know that you've said, Commissioner, you know, you walk into the front door of our house and you see red. It's just, that's what you see. The flags are there from the dining room, giant window of the dining room, the window over the sink in the kitchen, where I don't spend a lot of time, my wife does, I've noticed it, and our breakfast nook. And more importantly, I mean, you can see it from the sunroom, you can see it from every window in the house, and the house, as you've seen, looks south. I mean, that's the deal. And what they're proposing is not matching what the McCalls have. The McCalls have a two-story home, and the first floor is half underground. We'd love to see them dig. We would love to see that. We'd love to see that model that we see in your commission's guidelines where it's stick figures, and it's like, when you're on a street that's this sloping, like our street is, that if this roof line's here, then this roof line shouldn't be here. It's not about views. It's about canyon effect, and it's about privacy, and it's about me not looking directly into a wall of a house. Nothing he said is accurate, in my opinion. And the really sad part about this thing is, as scary as my wife clearly are and can be, is that they've not approached us, they've not been willing to talk about this at all, despite your encouragement, despite our reaching out and trying to talk. I have never met my neighbor. I've never seen her. I reached out to her when the story polls first went up to our surprise and asked her over for a glass of wine to see, to just look at it from our perspective. We didn't know you were going to do anything. We love your idea for a dream home. We've never met before. Please come over and check it out and see, you know, try to see it from our point of view. We just like to hear more about your plans. We were just shocked to see story polls go up, right? She said she'd be more than happy to come over and do that, and then shortly thereafter, she reached out to my wife to tell her that Justin was going to be handling communications moving forward. I have no idea why, but that's been the rule. However, Justin's not been to any of these meetings until tonight, asking for a denial. He sent Angie, who's his designer. So this is all in-house. This is the way this is being done. Every reasonable person that has looked at this design, every one of them, my neighbors, all of you, has said this is wrong and it's unfair to us. After the last meeting here, and thanks to your urging, Angie approached me outside and my wife, asking if we would like to talk about options, alternate plans. We said excitedly, yes, absolutely, we would. We would love to figure this out. She said she'd be in touch with us early in the new year. Never heard from her. Even after my wife reached out via email, she didn't get back to us. I think it's because Justin got involved. I'm not sure, but Mrs. Lim disappeared when Justin got involved, and Angie went away. And now Justin's here telling you how they just want to build a house like ours, and she deserves to have a house just like the McCalls. I don't get it. And I also don't get what we've been doing for two and a half years. If this commission doesn't matter, if it's just circum, if he can just circumvent it and go to the town council, I don't know what we've been doing. I really don't. I appreciate you guys so much, and the time, even tonight. I mean, I'm thinking, I'm sitting here for four hours? You guys do this on the regular. Thank you. Thank you for doing it. I'm here to tell you, I'm not going away, and I really appreciate you trying to be fair. We did have a brief exchange, Angie, when she talked to us outside last time. She said the problem with digging was the expense. I'm sure it was expensive for whoever did it at my house, too. She said the problem with moving the house further east, which is something that you had pointed out, because there's plenty of room over there. What Angie said was that the elderly Mrs. Lim would have to navigate a step due to an elevation change. And what's confusing about that, I bet you're on to it already, is that Mrs. Lim is fighting for a second story on her home, according to Angie, so that she can get a peek at the ocean if she stands in the right place, the right time of day, and the right time of year. But what about the many stairs that she would have to navigate to access that second floor? I don't get it. It just doesn't hold water for me. From the start, in my opinion, this project has been a masterclass in how not to do things, specifically how not to win friends and influence people, and how not to design a house in Carmel by the sea according to this commission's guidelines. Version 3.0 or 4.0, or however many O's you want, numbers you want to put on it, they all could be easily mistaken for the very first one if you look at that, those story polls from inside our house. That's where you got to stand, not just in the breakfast nook, anywhere on the first floor. If builders and designers like these aren't held in check, neighbors will end up despising one another, and the overall charm of our village will disappear. This is not the Wild West, as long as you say it's not. So thank you for caring and for giving your time to this very worthy cause.
Okay, anyone else from the public like to make any comments regarding this?
Thank you for doing this again. I'm a little unclear. I mean, I'm more clear now about why they want the denial, and I don't know that I'm opposed to it. We've been dealing with this for three years. It seems like we're either going to be dealing with it with you for longer or city council. But I just wanted to say on record that I am very frustrated that they, you know, the first time we came, you basically said unanimously, it's a redo. What they call a redo is a tweak. They've been called Band-Aids in here, tweaks. It's not a redo, has never been a redo. So we've been staring at these story polls for three years. We've spent so much time and energy and money talking to an architect, and we've had neighbors come over, friends come over, people look at this project, and no one other than the people involved on that side seem to feel that it is an appropriate design next to our house, as is. I've reached out to Mrs. Lim, I've reached out to Angie, I have not reached out to Justin, but Mrs. Lim did tell me a couple of years ago that they would be handling communication, and we just haven't had any. So we're frustrated. I'm sure you are frustrated and probably don't want to see us again, but I just wanted to say, I agree with Mike. Thank you so much for your work during this process. We would love to, I believe we can find a compliant house that is a beautiful house that Mrs. Lim will love, and that also doesn't ruin, you know, the vibe of what we have, which you've all seen now multiple times. So I do believe it is possible. I don't know why we haven't been able to communicate with anybody from that side other than the brief conversation we had with Angie after the last meeting in November or December. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, any more comments from the public?
Hello, my name is Angie. I'm the designer on this project. You've seen me multiple times and talk about this project. To clear things up, this house is compliant with design guidelines and the ordinances of the city. The only reason it has been denied has been the view issue with the McCalls. In terms of Ms. Lim not speaking with them, is she, they are hostile, she is not comfortable with making these conversations. That is the reason why that does not occur the way that it does. In terms of us making changes to this project, we initially met with them prior to even coming to the commission. We made provisions based on that. We've also made provisions based on every single hearing that we've had, and we've complied with every request that you guys have made of us. We've moved the house, we've shrunk the upper level, we've lowered things, we've done everything you guys have asked us to do. The view, I understand from the first hearing, is that it is of the tree line between the two houses, which is not affected at all. They will remain as they are. And my client does have a right to having a canopy view. In terms of having the, the first level be single, non-stepping, is that's for more of like an aging-in-place kind of thing. The upper level is going to be more for caretakers and her kids and things of that nature. So, yes, at the time being, she'll be able to enjoy the upper level and the views up there, and hopefully she'll always be able to do that, but she's requesting to have just a single level with no steps at one point in the house. We haven't gone to the basement level because that's quite an ask, that's a big ask for this property. The lot is very flat. Going to a basement level is not really in the budget, and it would go against design guidelines. It would be a huge, it'd be a huge endeavor to make that happen. So additionally, pushing it further back, like the McCalls have asked us to do multiple times, it does make the plate issues an issue for the height. We would have to regrade the site to make it lower, which is another big expense, and we've already made a lot of concessions to make this house as low as feasibly possible to make it habitable. I mean, it's 20 feet tall. It's allowed to be 24. We've made a lot of concessions to address this view issue. I'm not sure if it'll ever be, you know, solved, but we've tried our best. And I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any. I'm available. Thank you.
Any questions for anybody? Okay.
I take exception for the record to being called hostile. I've never been hostile. We've never been talked to by these people. All we've done is try to do the right thing by our neighbor and invite them over and talk about this. So I really, that's a very unfortunate comment to make. It's a false accusation for the record, okay? I'm really sad about that.
That is unbelievable. Unbelievable.
Please, sir, sir. Mr. McCall, please, please don't talk directly to, talk to us.
Okay, so she approached me outside after the last meeting because you asked her to. Was I hostile? I said, we can't wait to talk to you and figure out a solution. What in the world are we doing? I mean, what, what kind of accusation is that? All we've done is give our time and energy to try and make something work.
Mr. McCall, we understand, and here at the Planning Commission, we make our decisions based upon the project.
Okay.
So, and really, we understand that neighbors have problems during this process, but it's not how we make our decisions, and we certainly are making no assumption about your character based upon any comments here. And the same about them. We just, we know you guys have gotten to a real point of frustration because this is taking so long, but we understand that.
Okay. Apologize for addressing that.
Not all. I just want to let you know how we make our decisions.
Copy.
And it's no reflection, we're not making any reflection or any judgment about your character or the applicants. We just, we just base it on the findings and what they're requesting, you know? And so that's, that's how we're going to move on this, but, but thank you for your comments.
The commission does encourage friendly dialogue with neighbors.
Absolutely, absolutely.
It's the first thing you guys said to us, right? So that's all we've tried to do.
And your comments about when they reached out and how they didn't, we definitely listened to that, and that's important to us.
Okay.
But we're kind of, we're kind of beyond that at this point. I just want everybody to realize we're making our decisions now based upon the findings. Okay. No more comments in the chambers, I imagine? Anybody online? Okay, I'm going to close the public comments, open us up to the commission. I just want to say, we've, I think staff did a great job of laying out the findings and what our choices are, so I think the big thing, decision for us is whether or not we want to continue with this, or if we want to do the denial and let them take this to council. So anyway, why don't you go ahead and make your comments. Commissioner Locke, why don't you start?
Sure. Yeah, I am supportive of doing a denial at this point, but I would add no on condition number six, because I think it, condition five, or yeah, conditions five and six are very similar, and certainly the privacy and access to views is really what is behind our requests for a redesign on this project, and so I think that the box should be checked on number six for no.
Number six. I might not be looking at the right one. Anyway, Commissioner Allen, why don't you go ahead?
Yeah, I totally agree with Commissioner Locke. I would like to add no in the number six box also, and then also just, you know, express that I'm sad that, that we couldn't get resolution, and that hopefully, you know, maybe city council has a different way of approaching this that might work.
And Commissioner Kara Petkoff?
I'm vetting him along. I think we did our best. I mean, this is a very exhausting process. I remember July, August, I remember these meetings. I skipped the one in December, I wasn't here, so lucky me. But, yeah, going for the same project three times is really painful, and I understand how painful it is for the applicant and also for the neighbor. I think at this point, we have no way to proceed. I don't think that we can do anything to improve the situation. So I am for a denial and giving city council the opportunity to look at that from a different angle, and hopefully they have the wisdom to decide that conflict. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a resolution for denial, and we want to change the finding number or condition, is it a finding or a condition?
Yeah, sorry.
Finding, finding to a no on number six. So I'll make the motion that we accept a resolution with that change for the finding on number six.
Oh, second.
Second? Okay, any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Wait, I just want to make sure.
All right.
If I vote yes, I'm voting to deny it?
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, that will be no.
Don't do that now.
I don't want to make any humor of this. This is, I'm sad you guys are at this point. I just, I think we have done everything we can do. Another review body can take this up, and then, you know, I don't, I want you to understand, you know, all the parties involved, that you still have full review, you still have appeal available to you. The process really is not changing in any way, it's just a different review body's going to look at it, and so I think you're not, you know, nothing, nothing's really changing here. And we have a situation where the applicant does not want to make the changes, the direction of the Planning Commission, and I haven't heard any Planning Commissioners change their mind about the direction that we gave them. So, and I haven't, so we have no choice but to go forward. Any more comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Kara Petkoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
And Chair LaPage?
Yes, motion is carried. Okay, I think that, okay, good night. That concludes the public hearings, and we have a director's report?
Yeah, just a brief one. Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of notes, so the mayor and the mayor pro tem have been conducting interviews for your next colleague here on the Planning Commission, and in February, at the city, the regular city council meeting, February 3rd, they will be making a recommendation to the full council for appointment of a new planning commissioner. So conceivably, you could have a new colleague as soon as the first meeting, as the meeting in February. So, yeah, so that's, that's good news. Other good news, I think, to share is that this week, the city council adopted the updated historic context statement that Catherine Wallace worked on with her consultant and past consultants, that you all saw and made a recommendation to the city council on. So that was, that was a great feed, and that's a wonderful document. And then on, for me, probably the most exciting news to share with you is that we will have a new planning director starting February 3rd, which is about a week shy of me having done both jobs for a year. So I'm excited to not meet that milestone by a week. Barely. But I can share because it is official, and there'll be an article in the news this week, and I shared with the council, it's, her name is Anna Jeanette. She's coming from Monterey County. She's actually one of my former employees at the county. I stayed out of the interview process because of that specifically until the very end, but all the panels that interviewed candidates found her to be the top candidate. I think you all enjoy working with her. She has 20 years of planning experience, AICP certified, and just an all-around lovely human being, so I'm excited for you all to meet her. She will be sitting with us next month. She starts on February 3rd.
Congratulations.
Yeah. Seriously.
Look forward to meeting her.
Yeah, great. And that's it.
Okay, everyone, we are adjourned. Thank you so much.